Good evening, welcome to the September 7th, 2016 Meeting of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. We have a quorum present and I'll call that to order. Two things before we start on the agenda. First of all, we want to welcome our friends from the town of Smyrna to the northwest, Mr. Kevin Rigsby, who is the Planning Director for the City of Smyrna. So Kevin, thank you for coming. We appreciate you being here. And want to recognize a very special event for one of our Planning Commission members tonight. Mr. Ken Halliburton has a birthday today. So Ken, happy birthday to you. We would sing to you, but we can't sing.
Yeah. Good.
We have, the first thing on the Commission tonight is to approve the minutes of the July 20th, 2016, and the August 3rd, 2016 Planning Commission meetings. Are there additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, we'll declare them approved as submitted. We have ten public hearings scheduled for tonight, the first of which has been withdrawn. So we'll move on to the second. The second one is a zoning application for approximately 1.2 acres located along East Clark Boulevard to be rezoned from RS-15 to PRD, known as the cottages of Clark, Blue Sky Construction is the applicant. Ms. Green, good evening.
Good evening, thank you. Our first public hearing this evening is for you consider a zoning application that's been submitted, requesting for you to approve a zoning change request for about 1.2 acres from its current zone, which is RS-15, single-family residential district with a minimum lot size of 15,000 square feet, to PRD, planned residential district. This property is located along East Clark Boulevard, is along with the north side of East Clark Boulevard. And you can see that it's located east of the intersection of North Highland with Clark. Adjacent to this property is a river and it's in the floodway. The program book for this PRD is called cottages on Clark and it should have been delivered to you for your review. That program book gives specifics of the plan and they have not requested any exceptions. The plan is to develop it much like other developments that the developer has built in Murfreesboro, including General's Run, which is, but this would be at a much smaller scale. Proposed cottages on Clark consists of ten dwelling units on the 1.2 acres and so the density is about 8.3 dwelling units per acre. None of the units have attached garages, they'll all be parked with a parking lot and there are some amenities on site. The properties immediately adjacent to this property to the west and to the north, or to the east and to the north are zoned RS-15 and are part of a developed single-family subdivision. You can see property zone PCD, that's the Loveless property, which Mr. Loveless lives there and also operates a business, a photography business where he not only has a studio, but also prepares the photographs for distribution. And then I've included an additional map that is laid out on your desks and it's on the screen now, that gives a zoomed out view of what is, of the zoning along East Clark Boulevard. Anything that's in yellow on this map is a form of single-family residential zone. Anything in the orange color is a multifamily or a two-family. And then the red color is commercial zoning, so that gives you just a bird's eye perspective of the existing zoning along Clark. Yesterday, the applicants held a neighborhood meeting for this property. And I'm going to invite the representative of the applicant, Mr. Clyde Roundtree, to lectern at this moment to go through the specifics of this plan. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them for you.
Mr. Roundtree.
Thank you, Margaret Ann. Chairman Lamb, Commissioners' staff, my name's Clyde Roundtree, the Holes and Steel Engineering. As Margaret Ann mentioned, your pattern books are in your hands, so if you have any specific questions related to the pattern book, be glad to answer those. It is a single-family product that is attached homes, a townhome product type. The existing conditions around the home are a single-family off to the eastern side and then, as Margaret Ann mentioned, Loveless Photography onto the western side. Behind the property is an undeveloped site. It's ten units, there's six three-bedroom units and there's four two-bedroom units. Approximate minimum square footage is 1,400 square feet. Price point, about $169 for starting price point and up to, upwards to $229,000 per unit. As we mentioned, they're individually owned, they'll have an HOA for governing the property. The neighborhood meeting brought up several concerns over drainage, brought up concerns over how the property's going to be managed, brought up concerns about property values, how this affects property values. The homes really are nice, Craftsman-style homes, painted brick, cedar accents. Inside amenities would be granite, hardwood floors, so it's an upscale product. And as far as the landscaping's concerned, it'll have streetscape along West Clark, it'll have a Type C buffer on the northern property line, the eastern property line, and the western property line. And as far as the quality of product, you know, Mr. Burns, as far as the General's Run, General's Landing that was recently improved, and it'd be a comparable product to that as you can see in the pattern book. We met with the neighbors, as Margaret Ann mentioned, yesterday at a neighborhood meeting, had about four or five neighbors come out, had several phone calls related to the project. You'll hear about that in the public hearing tonight. A lot of the concerns of the neighbors really has to do with the lot behind this particular piece of property. And then some of it has to do with the site plan, the orientation of the buildings themselves. One of the requests was, is there any way we can possibly flip the dumpster to the other side of the property, potentially flip the amenities center to this property? We'd be more than willing to do that if the site plan allows it as far as the drainage is concerned. Beyond that point, I'm here to answer any questions you may have. Mr. Burns from Blue Sky Construction's here as well, and we look forward to hearing the neighbors' concerns.
Any questions for Ms. Green or Mr. Roundtree? Okay, thank you, Mr. Roundtree. Before I open the public hearing, I'll briefly go over the rules we conduct our public hearings by. When I open the public hearing, you'll be invited to come forward to speak either for or against this proposal. Please come to the microphone, state your name, and give your address for the record. If you would, we've got quite a few people here tonight that'd like to speak. We have nine other public hearings, so we need to keep the, your comments to no more than three minutes, please, so make your comments as brief as possible. All right, if you have any questions, the Planning Commission staff will make a note of your questions and we'll try to get them answered at the end of the public hearing. All that being said, I'll open the public hearing at this time, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak.
I'm Elizabeth Baybee and I'm a homeowner of 310 East Clark. The house is just adjacent to the property. Thank you for allowing me to speak and share some of our concerns, both myself and some of our neighbors. Others would be here tonight for short notice that you have time to get a stuff for their church obligations or other obligations that they don't have tonight. In fact, some of them did not receive any notice at all about the written zone. There are a number of questions that we have concerning the property in 300 Clark and East Clark. This is-
A small frontage lot that is in the very front and it doesn't involve the back, which is really a concern because that will make it literally impossible for Randy Wright to sell that property and could further complicate the drainage problem that he has. On page five, the third paragraph, it states that the applicant has a contract to purchase the property and wishes to develop it into ten townhomes. The next paragraph states that the planned development zoning also allows for exceptions for the zoning ordinance or subdivision regulations. The applicants have requested exceptions be made to the site setbacks for the proposal, for the proposed pavilion. What exactly are these exceptions? We'd like to know these answers before we even consider even allowing them to build, at least I would think. Looking at page 18, here are some of the questions that we have there. The amenity area, our party area, is located on the side of the single, four single dwelling yards feeding off, feeding off of it. Why couldn't this building be on the other side? That way it would not be, it would be over by Loveless Photography, who does not live there, it's just his business, and it would also have the crick in between. Why is the dumpster located on the side of the family housing instead of on the other side? Would you like to open up your window and smell the dumpster? The site plan also calls for two light poles in the parking lot, typical of those provided by the electric company. How would you like to have a light shining near bedroom window all night long? Could there not be motion lights or lights with shields on that would not be a problem for the neighbors? Some of the area on Clark is in the flood plan, so if this property is going to be built up or leveled down, it's going to be a problem for the surrounding homes, especially the back big lot. These are supposed to be townhomes, however, the person buying the home does not have to be the person living there. What is to keep Blue Sky Construction from renting out one or even all of those if you cannot sell them? The plan also calls for street trees or shrubs to be planted out front of the sidewalk that they're putting in. Cars leaving the driveway will not be able to see the traffic coming down the street, plus it will hinder the view from our drive as well. The traffic on Clark Boulevard is horrendous from 7:30 until 9:30, and also from 3:30 to 5:30. If you've ever been on Clark, you know what I'm talking about. These new homeowners will have a nightmare trying to get in and out of their own drive. How would you like to go to bed one night, literally wake up the next morning to find that a home is being built next to you with literally 36 to 52 people living in that dwelling? We have 15 names on a petition stating that we would like, not like, the townhomes built there. It's all the time we had to get because of the short time period that we were allowed. We do not have proper time, proper notice to prepare or to find out more information concerning this matter. Therefore, I would like to make a motion that we table the discussion concerning the cottages on Clark.
Thank you, Ms. Baybee. Okay, I'll close the public. Mr. Roundtree, there might be a few things you can comment on the questions. Did you make notes of them, sir?
I did. As far as addressing Linda's concerns, the ones I wrote down, first of all, the amenity area, as I mentioned, we're willing to move that over to the other side if it's at all possible. There's some site drainage issues that we have to respect. The dumpster location can be relocated as well, we believe. The city staff asked us to make sure that the truck would have no issue kind of backing in and out of the property, so that's really the concern, that's where it's located and where it's at. But I think we'll have some flexibility there. Drainage concerns, the whole neighborhood has expressed that because that, that area behind this property is all, all hundred-year floodplain, some of it's in the floodway. I mean, it's on the hundred-year floodplain and some's in, it's in the hundred-year flood, basically the whole property behind. So we haven't done a grading plan yet, so I've addressed that, that in the site planning process, all the drainage concerns will be addressed. As far as the townhomes being, going into rental, we realize that's a possibility anytime there's ownership. Mr. Burns was telling Linda in particular that one of his properties, 69 properties out of the 69, one is in a rental pool and is really a family relationship. One of the students is going to MTSU and they're using that and that will be their future retirement home. So his properties up to this point are not really properties that flip into rental, not to say that they wouldn't, but it does say he's had success in that area as far as the single-family ownership and staying with the owner, the primary owner. As far as the street trees, we realize that in the site planning process, we'll address any kind of visual triangles to make sure there's no obstruction visually as far as safety's concerned. As far as traffic on West Clark, we have no solution for that. I think it's, it's a road that's been upgraded, it's a road that has a lot of capacity, and it came up in the neighborhood meeting, it's always one of those things we have to wrestle with going, there's, there's not a whole lot we can do except for the fact that if there's 35 more homeowners, you know, people living in the, on the property, it will add some more, you know, traffic. But we believe the road has the standard capacity to handle that traffic. And that's really the extent of answering her questions. Side setbacks, I think, are consistent with what is required. She has asked, she's concerned about the fence, that came up in our neighborhood meeting as well. So we walked through, there's some existing trees that are on the eastern property line in her backyard, and Mr. Burns has made a commitment to the best of his ability to try to preserve those trees, or if she wants her property line cleared out, he'd be willing to do that as well. Have brought to her attention that there'll be a six-foot privacy fence that the staff has asked us to do on the eastern property line as well as the additional Type C buffer. So there'll be a decent amount of distance as well as a decent amount of buffering between Miss, her property and Mr. Burns' property. And we met today on site just to kind of walk it to make sure that anything we could do, we try to make concessions for. That's really the extent of answering her questions. Do you all have any questions specifically for me?
What about, did you mention light intrusion?
The lights, you know, in the site planning process, we'd have to do a photometric plan, so I let her know that that's addressed in the site plan. However, one of the site, the pole locations might be able to be relocated to a totally faces away from her, so that's, that's a kind of random placement of the light poles. So if we need to move one, I don't think there's any issue in doing that as well. And light shields, we respect it, any kind of light intrusion would be minimized, not to say that they wouldn't get a little glow possibly. Their master bedroom's on the eastern side of, on the western side of their house, so they'll be potentially, you know, having some effect at night on this, with this piece of property.
Okay, so you say you can move the dumpster and the amenity center to the western side?
Chairman Lamb, we're, that's our anticipation, we will make that commitment to do our best to. There's, the site kind of slopes off to the left and that's where the detention pond is right now, but I have no issue, you know, working with the city staff to see what we can do as far as making sure the dumpster works in a location that the track and, the tractor, you know, truck can move around, turn around. But yes, our intention's to move both the amenity center and the dumpster to the furthest western portion of the site if at all possible.
Okay.
There was a, go ahead Doug.
I was gonna say, you've got houses on one side and a pond on the other. Why don't you move the road to the pond side, which will take away the traffic from the homeowner's side? Just flip the whole thing.
It's, there's a little pinch point there Doug, on that back corner, there's a little notch and it puts a little pressure on us. I don't, I don't have any issue trying to do that as well, just flipping the whole, the whole scenario. That'll put their driveway right next to the, you know, to the, to the townhome driveway and that may be a little issue for my flow.
Clyde, I said that backwards, I'm sorry though.
Okay.
The driveway is on the pond side.
Correct.
Away from the homeowner.
Correct.
But your intentions are to move the dumpster and the amenity site to the other side.
Correct, towards the pond side.
That makes perfect sense. That will relieve a great amount of anxiety from the homeowner.
Yeah, we'll do our best.
Mr. Halliburton. You, or not you, she mentioned that, well, not a setback concession because it's a planned development, but, so if you moved that, there wouldn't be any setback issues at all, correct?
That little corner was really the best spot for the amenity center, and that's, the amenity center is really a pavilion, so that has a little flexibility really in size and shape, so if there was, Ken, we could probably change the shape of the structure if it, if it was encroaching upon a side setback.
But if you move it, that's what I'm saying, if you move it, would you have any setback issues? Okay.
Not to our knowledge.
Right. Okay.
Any other questions from Mr. Roundtree? Thank you, Clyde.
Thank you.
Comments or questions by members of the Planning Commission? There are none, we're ready for a motion.
I'm gonna make a motion that we approve, the developer has a track record of building what I would call a quality product, and I know that they'll do their best to make the changes that, to the best of their ability, so I make a motion that we approve.
Motion is made, and seconded and all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. The next public hearing is an annexation plan of services and annexation petition for approximately 27 acres located along Barfield Road. Ted Petty is the applicant. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Chairman Lamb, and good evening Chairman Lamb and members of the Planning Commission. Our next public hearing is an annexation plan of services and annexation petition for approximately 32.8 acres located along Barfield Road. If we could pull the map up to the TV screen, you'll see the requested area is colored in orange, it's located on the east side of Barfield Road, just to the south of New Salem Highway, and by itself, it's not contiguous with the existing city limits, so there have been a handful of parcels that have been added as additional study area, eight to be exact. The parcel directly to the east of the subject property is needed in order to make the property contiguous with the existing city limits to the east along the middle fork of the Stones River and the west fork of the Stones River. Those eight blue parcels identified as the additional study area are all city-owned properties and they contain the, the extension of the Stones River Greenway that has been constructed in the last several years. Along with the requested property and the 1,600 linear feet of right-of-way of Barfield Road in front of the subject property, that brings the total acreage of the site up to, or of the studied area to 32.8 acres. The requested area itself is just 15 acres. There is a companion zoning request for this property, which will be the next item on the agenda for public hearing after this one, but this public hearing will be just for the annexation plan of services and petition. The property is located within the city's urban growth boundary, and as I mentioned, we are including the right-of-way in front of the subject property along Barfield Road. And with the property to the, to the east, it is contiguous with the existing city limits. And Mr. Petty, who owns the property, has completed a annexation petition as required by state law, requesting the annexation. The plan of services for the property has been included in your agenda materials. It indicates that the city will be able to provide services upon annexation of the property. With that being said, I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing, and we do need to conduct a public hearing and then formulate a recommendation to the city council on this matter.
Okay, any questions from the Planning Commission? Okay, now this public hearing is pertaining only to the plan of services and the annexation petition. So at this time, I'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak pertaining to these matters.
Thank you, Chairman Lamb. My name is Arden Ward and I live at 2004 Woodridge Street. I am within half a mile of this proposed annex property. I am the sole owner of a small five-acre farm, so I have great concerns about as annexation encroaches upon what I consider my family farm that I've lived on for the last 30 years. Urban agriculture is the face of farming in the future, and it doesn't feel like Murfreesboro slash Rutherford County is very farm-friendly anymore. It really doesn't. I see time and time again farmland turned into townhomes. So I would like to get up right now on this item and express my opposition for this property to be annexed, and I'll save my other comments for the rezoning request.
Thank you, Ms. Ward. Nobody? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Any questions or comments by members of the Planning Commission or the staff? If not, we're ready for a motion.
Barfield Creek, the middle fork. It's the west fork. The middle fork's here, the west fork, and he's right at the beginning.
That's Barfield Creek. I've always heard of Barfield Creek. The middle. You have it east and west.
Move for approval.
Motion is made, is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. The next public hearing is for the zoning application of approximately 17.2 acres located along Barfield Road to be rezoned, excuse me, ZONE-RZ simultaneous with the annexation. Mr. Ted Petty is the applicant. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Chairman Lamb. This is the same property that we just considered for annexation minus the eight additional parcels containing the Stones River Greenway. The eight additional parcels are zoned RM in the county and there's no companion zoning request, so those will come in with an interim zoning classification of RS-15 if the city council approves the annexation. The subject property in orange, which was the actual requested parcel, totals 15 acres and technically according to our zoning ordinance, the, on the zoning map, the right-of-way is shown with the zoning classification as well, so the 2.2 acres of right-of-way bumps the total acreage being considered to 17.2 acres. Mr. Petty's representative, Mr. Tom Reed, who wishes to develop the subject property, has requested, along with Mr. Petty, a zoning classification of RZ, which is Zero Lot Line Residential District, which allows for both single-family attached and detached uses. It's, my understanding from Mr. Reed, that it is his intention to develop the property with small lot, single-family residential detached homes on the, on the subject property. The, a sizable portion of the property, of the 15 acres, probably about three to five acres, is encumbered by the floodway of the Stones River, meaning that about 10 to 12 acres is actually developable and development cannot occur in the floodway, although it can occur in the floodplain. Because of the floodway constraints and because of lot sizes for single-family detached homes in the RZ zone, it is difficult to estimate how many lots the subject property will realistically yield, because although the minimum lot size is 3,000 square feet in the RZ zone for single-family detached homes, oftentimes we'll see a greater lot size than, than the bare minimum, oftentimes 4,500 to 5,500 square feet, because 3,000 is, for detached product, is a, is a difficult lot size to do much with at all. The Stones River is located directly to the east of the subject property, as is the Greenway. To the north of the subject property is a, are several single-family residential and undeveloped parcels owned by World Outreach Church, and there are parcels owned by World Outreach Church across Barfield Road as well, as well as the St. James Park Single Family Residential Subdivision. And there are some agricultural properties further to the southeast of the subject property as well. The subject property is located within the study area of the Salem Pike Land Use Plan, and the future land use map included in that plan recommends that the property develop as medium-density residential. The plan defines medium-density residential as all single-family and two-family residential uses that involve a density of at least three units per acre but less than eight units per acre, as well as institutional, convenience-scale, commercial uses on a selective and limited basis, and general farming. So while in the RZ zone, there is the possibility for getting a density of greater than eight units per acre, the realistic density that you would see in the RZ zone for a single-family development would probably be in the order of about seven units per acre. So in general, the, the request is consistent with the recommendations of the Salem Pike Land Use Plan. So in general, the, the request is consistent with the recommendations of the Salem Pike Land Use Plan. Planning Commission will need to conduct a public hearing on this matter and then formulate a recommendation to City Council. I'll be happy to answer any questions, and Mr. Petty is in the audience, and Mr. Roundtree, are you, are you representing Mr. Petty?
Mr. Roundtree.
Chairman Lamb, Commissioners, my name is Clyde Roundtree, Huddleston Steel Engineering. I'm here on behalf of Mr. Reed, so if there's any questions that come up during the public hearing, I'll do my best to answer those questions. I did speak to Mr. Reed prior to the meeting, and he just wanted to let you know that he's planning on between around thirty-five homes to forty homes max on the property. I think some of the concerns we'll hear about tonight are some of the road conditions and those kind of things related to the access, and so I just want you to have a general idea what kind of density he's talking about on the developable acres. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roundtree. Okay. Any other questions? At this time, I'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak.
Thank you again Board for allowing me to speak. I'll state my information again for the record. My name is Arden Ward. I live at two zero zero four Woodridge Street, and that is within one-half mile of this proposed development. I am the sole owner of a five-acre farm that I've lived on for the last thirty years in this location. Again, I am against the development of this property. Just basic math, I just heard the gentleman state thirty-five to forty homes, but legally on fifteen acres, there's six hundred and fifty-three thousand four hundred square feet. RZ is a three thousand square foot lot. That's the potential, potential for two hundred and seventeen lots. Even if only half of that is developed, that would be a hundred and seven-ish lots. Let's say every home has the potential for having at least two vehicles. There's two hundred more vehicles on Barfield Road every morning. I'm backed up on Barfield Road trying to get to my job at the Rutherford County Board of Education every morning for at least fifteen minutes, trying to get down Barfield Road. Can you imagine how much worse it's gonna be if you add two hundred more cars to that calculation? We don't need this development on Barfield Road. I think we're all very content in the Barfield community with the community the way that it is. I don't see any need for development of townhomes. Once again, as was stated previously, the potential for townhomes to become rental properties, and then the natural progression from there can be the possibility for Section Eight housing. I just don't wanna see the community that I've lived in for the last thirty years developed in this way. I do have a question in that, has any traffic study been done? Has any floodwater study been done? Barfield Road has been known to be underwater. The flood of two thousand and ten, Barfield Road was underwater, and countless times, the water gets up to Barfield Road, if not over it, but every year, the water gets up to Barfield Road. So I do have questions about traffic study, and I have questions about floodwater study. And I guess that's all I can say.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Ward.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else?
Thank y'all. Jack Carter, twenty-one oh eight Barfield Road. I'm the agricultural to the southeast he was referring to. I have lived there my whole life, so y'all can pretty well guess where I stand on this. I have a question about building in the floodplain. What are your rules on fill? Is it cut and fill on site, or will you allow fill to be brought in? And what are you gonna do about the fill that's already been brought in without permits? The flooding problem, folks, is, it's real there. I've lived there, I've seen it over the road a lot. I've looked at flood maps. Part of that floodway, if you fill it, it's gonna affect upstream. I've seen the water there. I've seen it standing. That's a, it's a good backwater for that river. It's a lot of low area, and when the water gets up, it gives it a place to go, you know, before it starts trying to cause problems. So I hope y'all will do that. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commission Members. I'm Alan Farley. I live at nineteen sixty-four Orchard. Twenty-three years. There's a reason why the riverside of Barfield Road has not been developed, and I think that the flood area is a big thing, part of that. Basically, you have one parcel that's really probably developable, which is up closer to ninety-nine from this property, then everything else on the riverside basically is in the flood area, and also not, just not developable. I do oppose, I'm not opposed to it being in the city, even though I do feel like it was a reach to get there by going down the Greenway, which the Greenway is a great thing. I actually rode on it tonight on my bike, so. But I do oppose the RZ zoning, that I feel like that thirty-five to forty-five homes for that area, if you've ever driven, I've got a videotape where I travel every morning, because you can't get down Barfield Road. It backs up all the way back, all the way back to the Greenway from the intersection of ninety-nine and Barfield Road, and the PM, you can't turn left onto Barfield Road if you're between four-thirty and probably six-fifteen, because the, what stacks in the turn lane there to turn onto Barfield is blocked because of the roadway. So basically, you have to wait for the turn lane to go through so normal traffic can go, progress down ninety-nine. I see that every, every day. And so I do believe that Barfield, well, Barfield Road is a standard road, traffic is an issue, and I think that the access point to Barfield Road from this area will actually be at this property. So I think if you're trying to put an additional hundred, two hundred cars, and I think it's very important to have a traffic study done, because what you, you have a bottleneck, and then you're tying another bottleneck into that. And the flood is very real, as Mr. Carter says. The, the water does come over to Barfield Road and over Barfield Road, and I do know that we've got some stormwater runoff issues there as well. So it can't handle the current load that it has right now as far as traffic, and so I'm putting more traffic onto it would be even more dangerous. And I know that we have the county fire department, which is on Barfield Road, and that's, they cover the whole south part of the county, and then they assist, I think, the northern part. So that's the main artery for them to get to the interstate right there, and so when you do have traffic backed up, it does make it very difficult for them to proceed forward. The, I do ask that you do deny or amend this. I think RS-15 would be sufficient. I do think that it's, you have some good area there that's developable for a house or two, but I think that anywhere from thirty-five to forty homes or, you know, upwards to, you know, a hundred or so homes, depending on the, what the developer could do, is, that's not the proper place for that, because as you can tell by the property, it's bordered by the river, you have the, and the road. There's just not really much room there for the, for the residents to, to go there, and I hope that they have flood insurance that sold with that house, because they're going to need it, because that is excessive flood area. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Farley.
There's a Planning Commission, my name is Kevin Riggsby. I'm the Town Planner in Smyrna, as you said earlier. I don't live in Smyrna, I live off of Barfield Road, and I did owe a lot of the remarks that have already been made, so I'm not gonna bore you with saying the same thing of the folks of all you said. One thing I do wanna point out that I am concerned about, thirty-five or forty homes, maybe this developer's intent, what if something happens tomorrow, he decides, well, I decide I don't wanna develop, I'll just go and sell it. I've got the, the, the property is zoned to allow for lots that are three thousand square feet. There would be nothing in the world you all could do to stop it at that point. A subdivision plaque could come in, and it could be a hundred homes or whatever the allowed density would be, so. So I do, I do oppose the zoning. I didn't oppose the annexation either. It makes sense to be in the city. I don't have an issue with that, if you want to develop it in the city. I would request that it be something, density-wise, if it is developed, more in line with, with what Barfield Road is, which is county subdivisions and some city subdivisions, but they're certainly not at a three thousand square foot lot size density. So I appreciate you, the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Riggsby. Anybody else? Nobody? I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Roundtree, there's a few questions to ask. I don't presume there's been any traffic study done as of yet.
There has not.
She asked about a flood study, but I, I know the floodplain, you've, you've looked at that and how it impacts the property. Can you share that with us?
Well, I think after speaking with Mr. Reed, that there's a lot less developable property than even meets the eye. He feels like there's more to five, like five acres potentially developable, so there's quite a bit of a concern over the floodway and that, and that impact on the developable area. And I think that's where he came up with the thirty-five to forty homes, that there's no chance that there's gonna be a hundred and seven lots built on that property. So it'd probably be a more of a minimal impact kind of development site in terms of the actual capacity versus the land available. But as far as the flood study, I haven't been a part of that, so I'm not positive exactly what, what the analysis has determined.
Okay. I believe Mr. Carter asked about cut and fill and the fill that's existing on the property.
Yeah, and that's, I was looking at Sam for that one, just going, do we, I mean, there's some general principles within the city. Would that be something you wanna address, Sam, or how, how can we go about that?
Chairman Lamb, just, just before we get to that issue, I think I can shed some light on the density issue. In the RZ zone, as I mentioned, the minimum lot size is three thousand square feet for single-family lots. In, in my time of reviewing plans with the city, most of the RZ developments that we see, the, the lots that come in are more in, more in the five, five thousand, fifty-five hundred square foot, because it's very difficult to have a single-family lot that's three thousand square feet. So once you factor in the area for rights, rights of way and infrastructure, probably looking at if the lots are five thousand square feet, about six to seven lots max per acre, and say that eleven lot, or eleven acres of the property, ten to eleven acres is developable, you're looking at realistically the development potential of this property in the RZ zone to be along the lines of sixty to seventy lots as kind of a, a maximum under a realistic development potential. Now, could someone develop with three thousand square foot lots? There's always that possibility. I would say that that is, that there is a greater likelihood that it would be developed with five thousand, six thousand square foot lots minimum. So I think a realistic maximum density would be sixty to seventy lots. That could always be more, but I think that would be a realistic, realistic maximum, maximum density.
Okay, but Mr. Roundtree was saying most likely thirty-five to forty.
Yes, and certainly the lot sizes can go upwards of the minimum for an even lower density, which is what Mr. Roundtree has indicated.
Okay.
The other thing that Mr. Reed mentioned as well is talking to Bill Huddleston, that if a turn lane's required in order to alleviate some of the concerns over the traffic backup, and I believe that that's part of the road improvements, that would be a part of this, that, that the developer's willing to do that as well.
Mr. Huddleston, you wanna comment on floodplain and field issues?
Sure, thank you Chairman Lamb. The, the flood study that, that we're managing the West Fork of the Stones River by was actually originally conducted by and adopted by FEMA, and that's the flood study that we utilize to, to manage projects in this area according to our floodplain regulations. And, and so we, we do realize that some fill is allowed in the floodplain but not in the floodway. The, the flood study that we have in place allows some fill without significant increase in the upstream water surface elevations, and so the, the property, the project will be reviewed, make sure it complies with the, with the floodplain management ordinance and the flood study we currently have in place. Regarding Mr. Carter's comment about the fill brought in, obviously, you know, this property was in the county, and so we're not, I'm not personally aware, we're not aware of any, where the permits were obtained or not obtained for that. I think the developer heard the comment, and the city staff heard the comment, so we'd be interested in, in confirming that any fill that's in building areas or in road areas is adequate for construction, as we would on any site. Fill can be brought in on this property, and, and material can be moved around on the property to make it more manageable for development, and I certainly suspect that, that the developer would look to, to do that to some extent to optimize the use of the property.
Any other questions for Mr. Roundtree?
So I, I guess I do. I get the, 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 kind of the reasoning behind asking for the RZ based upon the fact that you only have so many developable acres, and even to get to the thirty-five or forty number that you're speaking of, you may have to have some lots that are, say, less than even what Matthew is dictating that would be a minimum lot size, meaning some of them may have to be less than five thousand, some of them may be six or seven thousand. So is there not a, you know, I don't know that we, you know, this property, I don't know that we can say that you can't develop this property, but is there a zoning that would be more appropriate, other than RZ, that would accomplish close to what the developer's looking for? That's RS-eight, and, and get close to the density that he was looking for, versus having a blanket zone where you do have a, the ability to have a three thousand square foot lot? Do you follow my question?
I do, Ken. I, I think the best answer is just what we're kind of experiencing through the whole, kind of revising the zoning, trying to figure out where that sweet spot is, where you get the density but don't have the multifamily kind of stipulation associated with it. And I think that's where the RS is gonna start coming up more and more, because it seems like it's a, it's a palatable market for that particular product. I think it's a broader-based product. I think, you know, starter home kind of experience as well as an elderly person retiring and that. You know, I think that's where the, I think the market's bearing that kind of zoning at this point. As far as Mr. Reed's concerned, you know, his reputation, he's gonna do a quality product, and he's, he's done that over and over again. So he'd be concerned making sure that it had all the, the quality that he's used to having. So out of respect to his, you know, past history and really kind of the target market that a lot of developers are going towards, I think that's where the, the orientation of the RZ zoning's come from.
And Mr. Halliburton, just to kind of go over some of the differences with the RZ zone versus the RS-eight zone. The RZ zone would allow both single-family attached and detached homes. The attached homes couldn't be more than two attached to each other, and that would be by right. The minimum lot size, whether they're attached or detached, of three thousand square feet. The RS-eight zone would allow a minimum lot size of eight thousand square feet. And when we're looking at the density of an RS-eight zone, that's more along the lines of four dwelling units per acre, which still would be consistent with the recommendations of the, of the Salem Yet Land Use Plan, but it would exclude the single-family attached, and it would require a larger lot size and, of course, lesser density.
Any other questions from the Planning Commission?
I've got several. Let's talk about part of the bigger picture problem. The, the capacity on ninety-nine is insufficient. The state has a plan, and we've been waiting for them for four years to fund this, to build that into a four-lane curbs and gutters, sidewalks, and turning lanes on ninety-nine all the way out to where Veterans Parkway. Okay, the state has a plan to do that. We've been waiting and holding our breath for years to do that. Ms. Rahm here. Would, would you come and tell us where we are on that project, please?
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. That project is slated for the... Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. That project is slated for the 16th, 17th, 18th calendar year for bid letting, but only the first year has been decided. So, the other two years can change when the legislators meet again. So, there's no guarantee that it'll be in that 16th, 17th, 18th calendar year.
It's a three-year period.
Three-year, yes, three-year period.
All right, now, my understanding is that the city's going to put in a red light, a traffic signal, a red light is not a good engineering term, but a traffic signal at Veterans and Old Barfield.
We are working towards that. We are working with Rutherford County on that project, yes.
So, but that's going to happen in my lifetime?
Absolutely.
Okay, in the next year?
Yes. We are hoping, we are actually hoping within six, six months to a year.
Okay, now, that will help some relief on the south end of Barfield Road.
That's correct.
Sam or Rom, my understanding that the Old Barfield Road is on our major thoroughfare plan.
Yes.
To be completely redone.
But that's also in the three-year plan.
That's in the three-year plan. So, we're not going to get any help immediately. But there are some concrete plans to build a new road on 99, redo Barfield Road, and put a traffic signal in at the southern end, which will help Veterans and Old Barfield.
Yes, sir.
Okay, now, if anybody in the audience can help us speed up that project, we certainly would appreciate that, but...
Yes, especially the intersection of Barfield and Veterans. The improvements have been done on Veterans Parkway, it's five lanes with turn lanes, but Barfield Road approaches do not have adequate turn lanes. So, signalization is, you know, will be held up until those turn lanes are in place, so that we can actually operate the signal with turning arrows and adequate storage for the left turns on Barfield Road.
Now, is Barfield Road a county road?
Yes, sir. It's, it's in the county.
Why hasn't the city and the county gone together 10 years ago to fix that road?
We have been working with the county. Again, it is, it is all based on what is being developed, you know, in that area. And we have not had, you know, opportunities to team up and come up with a plan to make those improvements.
I find it hard to believe that the county would put in its brand-new fire station on an inadequate road.
Any other questions from Mr. Balachandra?
Let me make sure I understood something you said. You're saying that that light will not go in until the turn lane improvements have been done on Barfield Road. Is that what I heard you say?
Yes, sir.
All right.
It will be together. The turn lanes must be in place for the good operation of the traffic signal.
Who is responsible for those turn lanes?
There you go, that's a good question.
The city administration is working with Rutherford County. That has not been determined yet. There has been some negotiation back and forth. We are hoping that since it's in the county, Rutherford County will be responsible for those improvements.
Chairman Lamb, if I may step in here, there are two questions about turning lanes. The turning lanes that Mr. Balachandra is talking about are to supplement the signal at Veterans and Barfield. The turning lanes that are required for this development at its frontage will be installed with the development. And so, the signalization at Barfield and Veterans is not tied to turning lanes at this property, only to the turning lane improvements on Barfield at Veterans.
Thank you, Ms. Huddleston. Is there another one?
Rom, I know we keep referring to the county, and I think the county mayor has committed that they're trying their best to come up with the revenue to do the county's part of it. The one thing that I want to make absolutely clear is everybody who lives in Murfreesboro lives in Rutherford County, so we keep referring to them like they're two different things. If it's in Murfreesboro, we pay for it. If it's in Rutherford County, we still pay for it. So, don't separate them to the point that it sounds like somebody else is going to help pay for it, other than the residents of Rutherford County will contribute as well. But half the population of Rutherford County lives within the city limits of Murfreesboro. So, I do think that because of the danger that we know exists at Veterans Parkway and Barfield, that we're exercising every opportunity that we, and every avenue that we can go to try and get that light in place as quickly as possible. As far as the use of this property, I often wonder the question of if it were your property, what would you do with it? And if it were your right to develop that property, how would you feel if everybody in your, that you'd consider your neighbors showed up and said, "I don't want them to do that," very much like the last public hearing we had? We do face major challenges whenever we deal with people's rights to do with their property what they want to do with their property. And I think in this situation, what the people are asking for is well within the limits of what that property could be developed as. So, I appreciate the concerns, and the bigger problem that we've got is much larger than this one development. The larger problem we have is the lack of state funding for highways, because Thompson Lane is in the same exact situation, Highway 99, is Clark Boulevard. They're exactly right, is inundated with traffic. And we look at Broad Memorial right now, and we say, "We're trying to make the situation better," but it seems like it's after the fact. We need money from the state to develop these projects. And I know that the real answer to any traffic solution in Murfreesboro is going to have to be, the state is going to have to allow growing cities the bulk of the money, because currently what's happening is it's being spread all the way across the state, and you've got communities, I'll use Woodbury for example, where the population's basically been stagnant for 20 years. Maintenance is probably fine for that community. I know they ask for money as well. But when we look at Murfreesboro, we're not a stagnant community. We are a growing community. 2035 plan shows our population doubling by 2040, probably. People are coming, they have to have a place to stay and, or a place to live. And so, I think the question for us is not so much whether or not we think it's a great idea, but I think the real question is whether or not it's within the rights of the property owner to do with their property, what they're asking to do, and whether their request is reasonable.
Any other comments or questions?
Make a motion.
No, we're ready for a motion. Motion is made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Let me remind everybody, this will go before the city council as well. This is a recommendation to the city council. So, there'll be another public hearing before the city council. Item E, zoning application for approximately 5.7 acres located along Osborne Lane to be rezoned from RS15 to Commercial Fringe, and approximately 0.6 acres to be rezoned from OG to Commercial Fringe. Chuck Barnes is the applicant. Mr. Blomley?
Thank you, Chairman Lamb. Our next item is for rezoning along the south side of Osborne Lane. Although the property doesn't have a whole lot of frontage on Osborne Lane, as we put the map up, as you can see from the map, it's just that appendage that sticks out to Osborne Lane. The subject property consists of two existing zoning classifications. The area in blue is zoned RS15, and the area in purple is zoned OG, Office General. Mr. Barnes is not the owner of the property, however, his father-in-law, Prentice Alsop, is the owner of the subject property, of both properties, that is, because the OG property is actually a different parcel. However, he has power of attorney over both properties for his father-in-law, and Mr. Alsop wishes to develop, or, excuse me, Mr. Barnes wishes to develop the property as a self-service storage unit, or a mini-storage development, as it's sometimes called. The subject property totals a little over six acres. The adjacent uses and zonings include commercial local to the northeast, excuse me, northwest, which is where the Speedway Convenience Store is located. To the west of the subject property, along Memorial Boulevard, are several office buildings zoned OG. To the south of the subject property is an auxiliary parking lot for State Farm, which is zoned PCD, Planned Commercial District. To the north and to the east of the subject property are a number of large single-family residential lots, zoned, or actually, probably not platted lots, more single-family residential parcels that are zoned RS15, and then also the Crown Point subdivision that you'll see along the north side of Osborne Lane, zoned RS12. The applicant has requested a zoning classification of CF for the subject property, and as I mentioned, he has indicated his intent is to develop the property with a self-storage development. Self-storage use in the CF zone does require a special use permit, and as you all know, there's nothing that would hold the applicant to developing the subject property with his intended use. Those plans may never come to fruition. However, if he does move forward with that particular use, then he would have to make application of zoning appeals for a special use permit, and there would be another public hearing with regards to the specific use, design, and layout of the subject property, as well as any buffering and the interface with the adjacent single-family residential uses. As an aside, you'll remember that during the Planning Commission day meeting, there was some discussion, and the reason why we delayed it for a month, delayed the public hearing for a month, was because there was a discrepancy with the plat that Speedway recorded, and whether or not Speedway's plat was correct, and whether, what the width of the appendage of this property leading out to Osborne Lane, what it really was. Since then, Mr. Huddleston, Mr. Bill Huddleston, I should clarify, the design engineer, has contacted the Speedway surveyors, and Speedway was indeed in error in their plating. So, that property line issue has been taken care of. Couple of things I wish to note before the public hearing on this matter. Mr. Richard Martin, who is in the audience today, provided us with a letter and some additional materials for the Planning Commission's review, and I believe Mr. Martin will be speaking at the public hearing. So, he provided that to us, and for the record, I did place it on your desks for your review. Also, I wish to note, as it may come up in the public hearing, due to an oversight by staff, the sign did not go out on the subject property until yesterday. However, there is a sign out there currently. We did mail the notices out, we did place the legal notice in the newspaper, and posted the legal notice on our website as well. So, all of our legal notice requirements have been met. It was just that the sign was not out, or it's customary, seven to 12 days that it's typically out prior to a public hearing. With that being said, I'll be happy to answer any questions, either before or after the public hearing. Mr. Barnes, I'm looking for him in the audience. He is here, as is Mr. Clyde Roundtree, representing yet another applicant tonight.
Okay. Any other questions? Any questions from Mr. Blomley? Mr. Roundtree, do you have anything to say before the public hearing? Okay, in that case, I'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak.
Thank you, Chairman Lamb, and members of the commission, the Planning Commission. My name is Richard Martin, and the information you have before you now is, has been prepared by me. I am a licensed geologist in the state of Tennessee, as well as a hydrologist. However, I want to make it perfectly clear that I did this pro bono, and was paid nothing for this. I did this at the request of my neighbors.
Mr. Martin, would you...
... to the site.
I'm sorry, I hate to interrupt you. Would you give your address, please, for the record?
I'm very sorry, Mr. Lamb. It's 292 Osborne Lane. Yes, sir. We have several concerns. I want to touch upon mainly the drainage issues and the geologic issues of the site. But one of the major overarching issues is that the vote tonight guarantees no obligation to go to a self-storage unit. It can do, the owner of the property can build any of 156 different uses on this property, some of which are not going to be very compatible with estate lots, which abut the, this, I termed it 5.7 acres, I understand, now it's six acres. Several of my neighbors here to make additional comments. I will limit mine to mainly the technical portion of sinkhole flooding. As you can see in Figure 1 of the information I presented to you, this property is internally drained, as many properties in Rutherford County, and then it flows by groundwater along a lineation or underground conduit to the sinkhole property, and then hence the Dry Creek and East Fork of the Stones River. During heavy rainfalls, as you can see in Figure 2, severe flooding has occurred on the, behind the property adjacent to the Speedway, and any increase in, or, excuse me, decrease in permeability by increasing the runoff from constructing any of the 156 uses is going to exacerbate this problem. Moreover, the lineation that connects the Alsop Sinkhole with the Speedway Sinkhole is causing dropouts as water increases to flow along this line. And this, Picture 2, on Figure 2, demonstrates one that has developed in the last several couple of years. Figure 3 is an assessment that I derived from the Natural Resources Conservation Service that assesses the applicability of small commercial buildings for this, for this site. And as you can see on the following page, it has a color code that indicates red being very limited, or yellow being somewhat limited. So, we have only the CUB, which is Cumberland soils, as somewhat limited. The rest of this property is severely limited due to hydrology and soil characteristics. Lastly, and I apologize for the number of attachments to this, but this is all part of the printout, so I felt obligated to provide this to you as part of the record. The last portion, last part of this information I provided to you is a National Wetlands Inventory Map, provided by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, which shows that the 1.7 acres of the sinkhole depression, and that on the Speedway property are both considered as waters of the United States. Now, whether that has any bearing with the Planning Commission or not, I don't know, but I was informed it would probably be advisable to put this in the public record for your consideration. And I think that about consumes my three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes.
And I'll let my neighbors speak to other issues. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Who would like to be next?
My name is Catherine Patrick. I live at 322 Osborne Lane. We're very concerned about this piece of property and the proposed usage. We're concerned about it being a rezoned CF, because this would permit the owner to use the property for any one of several uses, although he proposes currently to put a storage unit on that property. He's not bound to do so. Our major concern, as Mr. Martin has indicated, is the drainage issue, the water that drains off of... The water that drains off of all of our properties, all of our properties slope into this particular piece of property, and when it rains, and it is going to rain again sooner or later, when it rains, the water collects in that area and backs up onto our property. So we're concerned that if that property is developed and the runoff increases, that there will be even more backup, and that we will have flooding issues. We're also concerned with how, with the amount of water that will then be going through the sinkhole, and through the attachment from the sinkhole to the other sinkholes, and into the Stones River eventually. My understanding with sinkholes is that the more water that runs through them, the more likely they are to start collapsing, and that is what creates difficulties. So the drainage issue to us is really paramount. As someone whose land immediately abuts this, we're concerned about noise pollution, we're concerned about light pollution, especially from something like a storage unit, and we're concerned about increased traffic. We feel that this piece of land in particular is really incompatible with the proposed usage. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else?
My name's John Galebreth, and I live at 312 Osborne Lane, next door to Mr. Martin. And I had six concerns, just real briefly. One being the late notice, as was mentioned, the sign didn't even go up till yesterday, and I wasn't even given anything in the mail till Thursday, so I haven't really had time to really understand all the impact that this could have on our property. Number two is, if I understand correctly, the zoning could be not just storage units, but anything, and that is much as over 100 different uses, and I'd like to understand more about that. Number three, as Mr. Martin has mentioned, is the possibility for flooding into our land, our properties. Number four, nobody's mentioned, but the impact on the wildlife, because already with just the new Speedway gas station, there's been an impact on the wildlife. We enjoy deer and turkey in our yards very much, and it's already changing all of that just with the gas station going in. As Mrs. Patrick mentioned, the traffic is unbelievable on Osborne Lane, and that would only increase it. And then the last thing, number six, is how all of this could impact our property values, because we really enjoy our homes and our property, and it's already changing with the gas station going in, so it's something else that could change it even more. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you Chairman Lamb, members of the board, the Planning Commission. My name is Gary Patrick. I live at 322 Osborne Lane. We are the east boundary of the property. I have a couple of concerns. As my wife mentioned, light intrusion. Our bedroom is on the west side, and with the new Speedway, of course, in the wintertime, it's very visible, and this property being right next door would be right in our bedroom window, basically. I have a concern about dumpster, dumpster issues. If, in fact, it is a self-storage unit, dumpsters, locations, dumping the dumpsters, and the drainage issue. We have, I've lived in this house for 18 and a half years, and the drainage of our property drains to the west, where the property is, and the water stands in high-rain times, it drains to that property and is gone. If that property is developed, and that drainage is no longer there, that means our drainage is gone. And since we are on a septic tank, as are our neighbors, part of our yards are part of that system as well. So that causes some drainage. Osborne Lane, to the best of my knowledge, has no businesses on it. It's a residential street. This is a small strip of property. I'm not sure what the new survey shows as far as entrance into that property. It's a small strip of land next to one of the neighbors to my north. It is incompatible with us right now for being a residential neighborhood, a storage unit next door, or any of the other, as Mr. Martin said, 156 uses could be possible on that property, and as the neighbor that does have the whole east property line, I am very concerned about that. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Patrick. Anybody else?
My name is Chris Clark, 470 Osborne Lane. Before I get to, before I start, I'd like to say, with no disrespect to my neighbors, I've known Mr. Barnes all my life. We're both lifelong residents here in Rutherford County, and I want to speak on his behalf as far as a reputable citizen in this county, and what he says he's going to do, he will do. I look at the plans, as I've lived here all my life, and the city has grown, that north side of town has been developed in apartments, and multifamily dwellings, and that area has been inundated with that area, with that. So that light storage unit would work very nicely in that area. Also, I'd like to conclude that I would think that that would be the best neighbor that we could if we were having commercial. Light traffic, and usually with some variance and some buffer there, hopefully it will not disturb our neighbors, but if I had to pick, I would like to pick this type of zone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Nobody?
My name is Charles Jones. I live at 342 Osborne Lane. I've lived there for 21 years, and I've seen the community grow, and I've seen the whole character of it grow by the unavoidable development that you're going to have in any neighborhood there. My big concern, and just almost, I'm not supposed to, but to reiterate what other people have said, I'm very concerned about the ecology of the area. We've had deer, we've had turkeys, we've had, even seen fox out there, and since we've had that development, we've seen a lot of it disappear, and they've been pushed into areas. One of the areas that they actually live in is that area that's being considered for development right now. My big concern is I live downhill from it, it's not a huge hill, but the water right now in that area, and I've been there 21 years, and I've seen a lot of rain, and the rain that I've seen has caused, it's just about been like a pond or a lake there. It eventually drains, and I guess it goes through the, down the sinkhole, and ends up in Stones River somewhere, in the cave system Tennessee's got. But if that is flattened off and turned into a, essentially like a parking lot, where they're going to build on it, where's that water go? And I live downhill from it, so that's one of my big concerns, and concern for my neighbors also, how it would impact them. So that's my major concern right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Anybody else?
Yes, my name is Chuck Barnes. I live at 9887 Bradley Creek Road, and I am the applicant on this project. And I'd like to just reassure the neighbors, we are here to develop this property in a way that has as little impact as possible on any surrounding neighbors. We feel like this project has a mini self-storage, which serves the community. We've got a lot of multifamily homes, neighborhoods in the area. There are very little self-storage buildings available. We feel it's a big need. The Alstot family, which I'm representing, has been a local business owner here for many, many years, and we hope to keep that going with a family-run business. And a low-impact situation like we're going to hopefully provide is going to be a benefit to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes. Anybody else?
I am Jackie Passerilla. My address is 332 Osborne Lane. I'm just here in agreement with my neighbors, a lot of similar concerns. I do understand it is their property, but I guess I just wanted to say, we recently purchased property. I've enjoyed the acreage, the peacefulness, and so I guess my, one of my concerns is just noise from Memorial with, right now it's densely populated with, or densely covered with trees, that area. So I guess my concerns are noise level from Memorial, also losing a lot of that privacy. Right now, if I sit on my front porch, with a lot of those trees down, I would, you know, we would just see the buildings. So I guess maybe if this were to go through, considerations of expanding, having more of, what do you call it, easement, you know, instead of like, say like a 15-foot line of trees, expanding it more so we could just enjoy our privacy. But I am concerned about the zoning and the long-term effects. And I also do want to say, I was just made aware of this last night, we saw the sign yesterday, so, and I know you stated it was posted, but it would have just been nice to be able to see that sign up a little bit earlier, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, anybody else? Nobody? I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Roundtree, you represent the applicant. Why don't you try to respond to some of the questions that were brought up pertaining to the neighbor's concerns?
Thank you Chairman Lamb, members of the Planning Commission staff. My name is Clyde Roundtree, I'm still engineering. I mean, just going to go through all the ones that I think we can address initially. As far as 156 uses as possible in a CF zone, based on the characteristics of that site being a flag lot, there's, I would say, a majority of those uses, if not most of those uses, will be eliminated just due to no proximity to road access. It's basically a flag lot with an access point along Osborne. So I think that answers two questions. It's really only suitable for a really passive type of use of business. MiniStorage being tucked back into an area like this is probably appropriate in terms of maximizing the use of that particular site. As far as commercial property on Osborne Lane, I think it'd have little impact on Osborne from a visual standpoint, just because it'll be tucked behind the existing homes that are there. Flooding will be addressed in the site planning process on two different fronts. It'll have to go through BZA, like we mentioned, but also just through the site planning process. If the site has a lot of sensitive spots, be it sinkholes or what have you, those will be identified through the site planning process, and drainage will be addressed at that point. As far as soils for development, that's something else that will be considered in the site planning process, but I do know MiniStorage of all the uses is probably the softest foot as far as foundations concerns and weight concerns, so it might be a good application for a soil that's not really conducive for a lot of other uses. As far as the noise pollution, light pollution, increased traffic, although MiniStorage is not the most aesthetically pleasing thing in our world, they're probably the kindest neighbors we have in terms of development. We've tried to get a lot of MiniStorage rezoned, and we realize that they're really a minimum-use kind of facility typically. A lot of them, no matter literally how large they are, tend to be eight to 10 trips a day, so they have marginal, if minimal, impact on traffic. So I think it answers the question of traffic. It's probably the best thing we can do as far as not increasing traffic. As far as light pollution, as was mentioned early, lights, light standards are required through a photometric plan, so any sort of light shields would be, you know, would be considered. A lot of people doing MiniStorage do wall-mounted lights, so really there's very little lights above the level of MiniStorage, so they, they don't tend to put a lot of noise, or light pollution out. As far as noise pollution, at least the designs that have been approved lately are very much kind of a barricade style, so what the neighbors would see is more of a masonry wall. I'm not saying that that's what we're doing exactly, there's been no site plan done, but it seemed like the ones that are getting approved have more of a inward type of orientation than an external type of orientation. So as far as the neighbors are concerned, you know, granted, they wouldn't be seeing the natural setting that they have now, but there's a good chance they'd be looking into something that would be more of a masonry type of wall, very little detail, and then as was, as she requested, some sort of buffer. We know there'll be buffers required, so in addition to some sort of potentially masonry wall, there'll be vegetation that can soften that. So I think that answers the noise pollution, light pollution, and increased traffic. It's always tough, and as one of the neighbors mentioned, the north area of Murfreesboro's growing, and as you mentioned, a lot of that's in higher-density type of homes, as we're seeing a lot more of those approved. So MiniStorage continues to be in need in that area, as well as all over Murfreesboro. It seems like there's a lot of those units around, and a lot have been approved, but the reason they're getting approved is because there's a need. And everyone we've worked with MiniStorage, typically they have a waiting list, typically they're 100% occupied. So it's a business model that works in a lot of applications on the north side of town, and I think it could be appropriate. And I think in terms of that lot development, you know, it's always one of those questions, highest, best use of land, if that's something we would say. MiniStorage would be a pretty soft foot, all things considered, in terms of impact on roads, and unfortunately visually, it'll have an impact on their particular situations, but the depth of their yard and their orientation of their yard, I think they'll have some distance, and we've learned that distance is a really good buffer, but there would be a buffer requirement as well. As far as dumpsters, those are fairly flexible in terms of their location, and we can locate those in situations that are, you know, more along the side of where the Speedway would be, or where the offices would be, if that would help the neighbors in terms of any sort of noise intrusion on their site, impact on wildlife, that's just the nature of development, unfortunately, in this area. We're seeing that consistently under pressure. And as far as an incompatible use, typically the MiniStorage units are on fringes of residential developments. Sometimes they're embedded inside residential developments, but this one would be considered more of an fringe of a residential development area. So I think the location would be suitable for the business to do well. I do respect the fact that it would be bordered by residential property, but it also is bordered by commercial property. So I think, I think there's a level of compatibility that should be considered in this, that I think is appropriate. So all that being said, I'm here to answer any other questions. Again, we don't have a site plan that's been committed to, so I'll do my best to answer anything you may have.
And Chairman Lamb, I think that there are a few things that I could add to what Mr. Roundtree said.
Go ahead.
With respect to dumpsters in the commercial fringe zone, our zoning regulations do require that dumpsters be located the maximum distance feasible away from properties that are zoned for single-family residential purposes. So as a function of the site plan review, the dumpsters will be required to be pushed as far away from those, those homes as possible. As Mr. Roundtree mentioned, we do have light standards in our zoning ordinance. Those lighting standards have only been around for about seven or eight years, but we will make sure that any development on this property, the lighting standards are met. The gentleman mentioned property values. None of us on the planning staff are licensed appraisers, so I really don't think that we are qualified to speak to that issue. Mr. Huddleston on our staff may have some additional information or thoughts on the drainage and sinkholes on the property. I did want to, before Mr. Huddleston discusses the, the neighbor's environmental concerns on the property, I did want to discuss a little bit about the uses that are permitted in the commercial fringe zone. I think that there's some validity to what Clyde is saying, that, that while there are a number of uses that are permitted in the commercial fringe zone, and I think Mr. Martin quoted 156 uses... Martin quoted 156 uses, the, this property, in the way that it is shaped and situated, does not lend itself to quite a number of those uses. So it, it's a difficult property to, to figure out, you know, a use for. That flagpole is about 50 feet wide, I believe, and, and is several hundred feet in length. Many commercial uses are gonna want the visibility on a, on a major roadway, so any commercial use that locates on this property is not going to have that visibility. They'll have, likely have a sign up on Osborne Lane, but will not have the visibility of their buildings on Osborne Lane. They'll be so far removed from the street. So I think that while there are numerous uses that are permitted in, in the CF zone, this property, there is kind of a limited application. And one of the Planning Commission, one of the things the Planning Commission is tasked with is, is, is this proposed zoning district the correct zoning district for this property? And, or is it the highest and best zoning district? And as RS-15, or in any resident, single-family residential zoning classification, there may be some inherent development constraints with the property, just due to its, due to its size and shape also. So it, it's, it's a difficult piece of property to really figure out a good use for. With respect to the use that, that Mr. Barnes proposes, it would require application to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a special use permit, as I mentioned. The Board of Zoning Appeals would rigorously review the design to make sure that it is compatible with the surrounding land uses, and that would be not only for buffering, it would be how the buildings interface with the property. The Board of Zoning Appeals has the authority to place additional conditions above and beyond in order for it to be made compatible. And with that being said, even if the property were to be rezoned to commercial highway, there's always the possibility that the Board of Zoning Appeals may not approve the special use permit if it determines that the standards are not met on the property. So just really wanted to bring a little bit of perspective to the property, and that it is kind of a difficult piece of property to, to figure out a use for, just due to its, to its location and proximity away from Osborne Lane.
Okay. Let me, Mr. Roundtree, I'm trying to get you down from the podium. Anything else you'd like to add?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Does anybody on the Planning Commission have a question, Mr. Roundtree? Yes, sir.
Mr. Roundtree, have you and your applicant considered deed restrictions on this for many storage?
Not, not at this point, Doug, to my knowledge.
That would give the neighbors a knowledge of exactly what's going in, as opposed to having 153 or 156 uses.
Okay.
Mr. Blomley is correct. The size and the location and the shape of the property is gonna prohibit many, 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 many uses, because most people want visibility, and, and you don't necessarily need visibility.
Right.
That's something that you might consider.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Roundtree? Thank you, sir.
Chairman Lamb.
Mr. Huddleston, would you address, we, we heard some neighbors talk about their property drains owned to this property, and others talked about their property was downhill from this property, so, talking, excuse me, talking about almost six acres here. Tell us about our drainage regulations, about what can happen on the drainage of this, as far as affecting the drainage owned to this property and from this property.
Sure, glad to do that, Chairman Lamb. Mr. Martin's assessment of, of many of the characteristics of the site, I think, was, was right on. I, I think the, the limitations that, that he enumerated, we shared with the applicant and his design team, and they're certainly aware of them. The site plan process will help us understand the impacts of those. What I would like to say about this area is, it is a series of closed depression, as the neighbors have mentioned. They've witnessed those closed depressions and sinkholes filling up with water during extreme rain events, and, and we've got a lot of documentation on that as well. I, I think I'd like to take the Planning Commission back to the, to the late 1980s and a, a development called Hamilton Green that resulted in a failed project there, primarily due to drainage. It was immediately north of the airport, and if we'll recall that time, the city stepped in with the bank who received the property. We constructed a project, and, and we named it the Aubrey Fly Ditch, although that's not an official name, but we constructed a pretty significant drainage improvement for this north part of Murfreesboro. We studied that with U, US Geological Survey and got some good information on that, gave us a good backbone in there. When we constructed Osborne Lane, we were able to then extend that drainage system with the roadway, east and west somewhat, and we've actually extended almost to Memorial Boulevard, the drainage system in Osborne Lane. That gave the Awesome Property, and which is now the Speedway Property, access to a drainage system that was not available to it before. The Speedway Plan, we looked at carefully as well, but because they had access to an outlet in Osborne Lane, it helped relieve some of the chronic drainage problems and chronic flooding problems in that area. This property as well would have access to that, because that system is downstream of here. What, what our drainage regulations require is that they manage the volume here. The bathtub is only so big. The bathtub stretches along the east side of the property line. It actually stretches onto a couple of the neighbors' property. I think, if I've got this address right, 322, is that the Patrick's? I think it stretches partly onto the Patrick's property, and I think we probably have some flood imagery showing that the water standing on that property from time to time. So our charge to the design team, don't make matters worse. Our charge to the design team is not to make the bathtub smaller. Our charge to the design team would be not to put any additional water on the neighbors in this situation. And, and I've worked with, with the design team on quite a few projects, and, and certainly they're very comfortable and, and very familiar with our expectations there. And I'd say that the owner and developer doesn't want to make matters worse for the, for the neighbors as well. A lot of the permitting and, and review that we, we will do will be with the site plan and the BZA application, and we can certainly talk in generalities here, but, but I think staff's understanding here is that we would expect them to, to not make matters worse on their neighbors.
So they can't divert any more water onto the neighbors, nor can they restrict the neighbors' water from coming onto them?
That's correct.
From what it is already?
That's correct.
Any other questions?
Sam, the term was used, and I know we've been in some legal classes recently where they've referred to the waters of the United States. Can you tell me what impact that has on this property?
Well, without knowing specifically that there are wetlands on this property, Mr. Martin, and, and perhaps we should ask him that question, he's a, he's a recognized expert for the city of Murfreesboro, and, and we've, we've relied on his opinion on wetlands in the past very significantly. But it's suspected wetland area, I think the developer heard that, the design team heard that, and our charge to them would be, help us determine if there are wetlands on there, and if, if there are wetlands on there, would the United States, through the Corps of Engineers, have jurisdiction, or would the state of Tennessee have jurisdiction, or would they both have jurisdiction? And, and certainly those are areas that we're interested in, but they're just beyond our regulatory ability to influence. We, we really advise the, the developer to, to do their due diligence in that area, and then make proper applications and notifications to the state of Tennessee or the Corps of Engineers as appropriate.
The majority of these items that, that were questioned were, are items that are normally handled at the site plan approval process pertaining to drainage, buffering, access, lighting, entrance, and all that.
And I think that's a, a true statement from the engineering standpoint, and I say it's also a true statement from planning and BZA standpoint.
Yeah. I'm going to ask. Planning Commission, Mr. Whitaker, do you have anything?
Chairman, I just wanted to make sure, with all the speaking, talking, I'm not sure that we closed the public hearing, I just didn't want to forget to do that for procedure.
That's true. I don't, well, I thought we did. Did we not do that? Yeah, I think we closed the public hearing. Show the tape. No. I didn't close the public hearing. It's closed now. I believe I did.
Chairman Lamb, I just did want to reiterate that despite the fact that the property does have some visibility limitations, there are other uses that could be developed on this property, and it, there is always the possibility that the self-storage use that is proposed may not be what develops on that property.
Any other questions or comments?
I, I'll just dovetail on what Matthew just said and what Doug said earlier, without going through the planned commercial development process. I think there is some merit that we, we give some sort of guarantee. I know that what Mr. Barnes says will happen, but I, I think if, if this is what's gonna happen, a deed restriction would at least assure the neighbors that that is what's gonna happen, again, without having to go through the planned commercial development process.
I understand, of course, that the Planning Commission cannot require
We cannot.
An applicant to put a deed restriction on.
Okay.
That would be totally voluntary on their part. We can't require that.
But wouldn't any restrictive covenant be through perpetuity, which would be awfully restrictive on this property for, you know, fifty years down the road?
One of the problems with the restrictive covenants is they can be changed by someone. It depends on the situation and how they're set up, but they can also be changed.
But that's restricted covenant. You're not talking about deed restrictions when you're talking about that, are you?
Yeah, deed restriction, restrictive covenant, whatever you want to call it, if, if, number one, the Planning Commission cannot require a bulk zoning applicant to limit what he's asking for. Now, you can deny the zoning. If you, if in your determination that's not an appropriate use for this property, then you can deny the application, or you can recommend denial by counsel. But we cannot condition the zoning on it being some specific 1 or 20 or whatever of the potential uses. If it's bulk-zoned, it's bulk-zoned.
Me personally, I would, if it's going to be developed, I think this is an excellent use for the property, and the reason I say that is, recently in, in, in my neighborhood a block and a half away from me on Northfield Boulevard, we just approved warehouse space or storage area like this, and after going through a very lengthy process of trying to come up with what's the best use for the property, it was quickly determined by the neighborhood was, we have too much traffic and we want the least impactful thing that you can possibly put there. And after looking at the impact that the storage units have on a piece of property, this would probably be the least impactful thing that you could put on that property as far as Osborne Lane is concerned. Any other type of usage, other than the storage unit business, would probably, I mean, even a dentist office would have more visits in a day's time than would a storage unit generally. So, and, of course, you know, the operating hours and stuff like that, there, there are things that the neighbors might ask for if they feel that this is the development that they would choose to go with. Of course, we, as a commission, can't ask for deed restrictions or restrictive covenants, but as, as residents, I think you have that ability to make those requests that potentially could make it more comfortable for you and the situation were deemed that this is the appropriate use.
Mr. Smotherman, and just to add on to that, if they do move forward with the, the self-service storage use, the Board of Zoning Appeals would have the authority to place reasonable conditions on the approval, such as hours of operation, proximity of buildings, any other conditions that they feel are necessary to, for the use to be compatible with the surrounding area.
I do think it would be beneficial as well if you were to possibly not disturb the property any more than you have to, until you have come up with a plan, what you want to do with it. I know Jackie, I'm, I'm calling you Jackie, 'cause I didn't get your last name, I'm sorry, but the, I, I think she has a compelling argument. If there's tree lines and stuff like that can be preserved in the buffer space, I think that would be very advantageous to try and preserve anything that we possibly can there that might absorb sound or improve their view from their homes.
Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, what I hear is the sentiments of, of the neighbors is that the concerns of the, of the drainage, and what I hear from Mr. Huddleston is that the design team and, and our staff will work out proper drainage.
Is this part of the 231 basin, or is it, would this be further north than that, or?
This was part of the study area that was included into 231. Actually, we call it the North Murfreesboro Drainage Area. That area was generally bound by, centered on Memorial Boulevard, but it's bound by Haynes Drive to the south and Thompson Lane to the north, and it reached out to the east and west until we got into more, more well-established drainage patterns. This area was, was identified as a drainage basin, and the concept for the drainage basin was to be able to access the Osborne Lane drainage system, which Speedway did, and which this property has access through, because it has frontage on Osborne Lane.
Do you think this basin, and I know we're dealing with sinkholes, but is, are we draining towards Hooper's Bottom? Is that where this water's ultimately going?
I think our, I think our ditrace work suggests that it's going different from Hooper's Bottom and probably directly into Dry Branch and, and East Fork of the Stones River, where Hooper's Bottom goes to the west fork of the Stones River, and, and some recent di tracing, I think, has confirmed that for us.
Any other questions or comments? If not, we're ready for a motion, one way or the other.
Because I think this is a good usage for the property, I would like for us to defer this, and the reason is I would like for the neighbors to have a little more opportunity to communicate with the developer as to what restrictions they might ask for on the property, and if they work something out fine, if they don't, then it'll come back to us and we can vote on it how it's presented. But I think that in fairness to the neighbors, we were a little bit late getting the sign out there, I'm disappointed with that, and, but I understand things happen, but the, the fact that we were a little bit late getting the sign out, and the fact that I think there's still opportunities for us to wind up with a better plan than what we're currently looking at, I'm, I'm gonna move for a deferral.
Motion is made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is made and seconded, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. As far as I hear, at least three yeses, so we have five people here, so the motion carries. Deferment until when, Mr. Whitaker?
Mr. Blomley?
Deferment for two weeks till our next day meeting, is that, is that the intent of the Planning Commission?
Is that, is that adequate?
Mr. Roundtree?
Is that adequate, Mr. Roundtree? Can you give the neighbors? Okay. Okay, moving on to the next, thank you very much for coming and participating, ladies and gentlemen. Moving on to the next public hearing, it's an annexation plan of services and an annexation petition for approximately 84 acres located along Old Salem Road. David Alcorn, Rucker, Donnell, Donnell Foundation, and Linda Gilli are the applicants. Ms. Green?
Thank you, sir. This public hearing is to consider a plan of services and an annexation, and three annexation petitions that have been submitted to the planning department for properties located along Old Salem Road. You can see the properties on the map before you. They're shaded in the orange color. Existing city limits is the yellow color with a green border, and the areas that are white are in the un- are in the unincorporated area of Rutherford County. The subject properties are located along Old Salem Road and East Overall Creek Road. The study area consists of three separate parcels with three separate owners, each of which have submitted a petition for annexation. The parcel where I have the hand cursor moving is owned by Mr. David Alcorn, and on this property, there is one single-family home. The property to the north, just across East Overall Creek Road, and this is East Overall Creek Road, although it does look like it's an extension of Constantine Drive, it's not, it's actually a part of this road. So, the property to the north is owned by the Talmage-Gilli Trust, and the trustee has submitted a petition for annexation for that property. And then the property that is located along Old Salem Road is a part, is owned by the Rucker-Donnell Foundation, and a portion of this parcel is already within city limits. You can see the yellow area that I referenced earlier, existing city limits, is a part of this parcel, is currently zone, is currently in city limits. This portion was left out when that was annexed, so they're now requesting for their property to be annexed as well. The study that you have includes 3,800 linear feet of Old Salem Road right-of-way, includes 725 feet of Overall Creek right-of-way. We have included the plan of services in your materials for you to review. We would just like to make one correction in the plan of services, and we'll do that before it goes to Planning Commission, and that is on page sixteen, it identifies the developer as being responsible for installing a box culvert along East Overall Creek Road when our Assistant City Engineer actually identified the city as the responsible party to construct that box culvert. So, we're going to change the wording to say by the city as development occurs, because it's not something that we'll need to do immediately, but as the development occurs, it will be something that the city's committing to doing because that road does need some help with some existing drainage. I've got a second map in the materials that has a large area that's hatched in yellow. The area hatched in yellow is within the Murfreesboro urban growth boundary. If it's not in the yellow area, then it's not within the urban growth boundary. You can see that two of the parcels are completely within the urban growth boundary, and the third parcel, the one owned by Mr. Alcorn that I mentioned earlier, is partially in the urban growth boundary, but mostly not located within the urban growth boundary. There have been modifications to our state laws regarding annexation, and it's now possible for the city to annex this property that's not the urban growth boundary because it meets certain criteria, and we did consult with our city attorneys to confirm that that's something that indeed we could do. This property, of course, is being petitioned for annexation, so the owner wants to be annexed, that's true for all three parcels. The city doesn't annex property for which we don't receive a petition or consent for annexation, so none of this annexation study includes properties that didn't want it. It's all people who've requested it. They have sewer, city sewer runs through the parcel not within the urban growth boundary, it was extended when the Buchanan School District sewer assessment was extended, so it does have access to sewer, so we would like for that to be in the city limits. The, Mr. Alcorn's representative is Clyde Roundtree, who's here this evening. The Rucker-Donnell Properties representative is Mr. Matt Taylor, who's here this evening, and then a representative of the Talmage-Gilli Trust is here as well. If you have questions from any of those, we'll be glad to answer them. There is a companion zoning change request for only the Rucker-Donnell property, so that's the long property that's got the most frontage along Old Salem Road. The zoning application's not being considered for this public hearing. This public hearing is strictly for you to consider the plan of services and the annexation petitions, not the zoning. The very next public hearing will be to consider the zoning. If you have any questions from staff, we'll be glad to answer them either before or after the public hearing.
Okay. Any questions from staff?
Chairman?
Sir?
I would like to interject that we are proposing to annex outside the urban growth boundaries, and I did have a meeting with the county planning director, Mr. Doug Demozzi, who subsequently had a meeting with our county mayor. They had talked this over with their legal department as well, and we had a follow-up meeting after we had informed them and what our intentions and what we're going to do, because later on, there will be another meeting, I mean, another request, and is also outside the urban growth boundaries. Mr. David Ives may want to talk to you before we get into this and explain how and why we're doing that, because before, we would not go outside the urban growth boundaries.
We've really never had the particular opportunity that we have at this point, and the urban growth boundary has been a distant boundary for the most part. We haven't bumped up against it in the past that I'm even aware of. We have looked at serving an outside-the-city sewer customer that was some distance past the urban growth boundary, but I'm not aware of us actually bumping up to the urban growth boundary until this time. Actually, when the legislature established the annexation by ordinance and the urban growth boundaries, that was done in, I can't remember which year, but it was a number of years ago when that was done, there was a provision in that statute at that time that said that none of the urban growth boundary provisions and the, that none of that would prohibit written contracts between municipalities and property owners regarding annexation. If a property owner wants to be annexed and is contiguous with the city limits, then that property owner can be annexed even if he's outside the urban growth boundary. There's also, of course, a process where we can reconvene the county city committees, and we can look at modifying the urban growth boundaries. That's not necessary, however. If a property owner is contiguous with city limits, and if he wants to be annexed, he has a right to be annexed, and we can annex him. Again, it's just never come up before because we've never reached this situation. As we have grown out to the southeast, we are now in that situation, we are now annexing up to the end of our urban growth boundary. There's a property owner next door to that who wants to be annexed, and we have the legal right to go ahead and do that.
Thank you, Ms. Ives. Any other questions of the staff before we open the public hearing? Does any representative of the applicant have any opening statements before I open the public hearing? Okay. In that case, I'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak.
Yeah, my name is Brady Allred. I live on 5871 East Overall Creek Road. I've lived there since 1980. The property you're talking about, since you grouped the three together, my question was on the growth boundary, and on the study paid for by the city, that was out, so you've made it clear that you think you can go outside if the owner wants to annex, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, I have some other problems with that one particular piece of property, the 25 acres of Mr. Alcorn. It floods two or three times a year, depending on the rainfall. The whole acreage will flood except the perimeter around it, and also, it's bordered on Overall, East Overall Creek Road, which is a single-lane road all the way back to where it dead-ends. All right? The traffic, because it has developed with larger lots, like five-acre lots of houses, so the traffic on it now is, you have to get off, one car cannot meet the other, and one has to get off the side of the road. But this flooding problem, it's not just from a runoff, it's also from a sinkhole on an adjacent property. So, it's, I've seen it flow over Old Salem Pike, and that years ago, a lot of times, we couldn't get out of the road because the water was so deep. So, I'm here, I understand the property owner's concern and want to use their land, but I'm here to represent those that are not here, the people that live around them, and the people that are going to be affected by this, by this annexation, and soon, to develop development, because that's what it's leading to, and I just think that, you know, the sewer line does run across it, but with these problems, it's going to take a lot of drainage work. All right, if you annex it into the city, I have a question for y'all. Is, will a city be in part or in whole responsible after annexation for doing drainage work?
We'll answer your question at the end of the public hearing.
Okay. All right, well, I'll leave that then, but if it is, then this is a holding area, all right? The road acts as a dam, more or less, and if you do accomplish drainage there, the property across the road, the thirty-four acres, and on down, this drains into Armstrong Creek. All this property here, if you do alleviate the ponding and the drainage there, it's going to create more problems across the road on, say, two miles to Armstrong Creek. So, I was wondering, and I'll ask it later, but this, if the taxpayer of Murfreesboro had to pay for this, would this really be worth their money to have to do this extensive drainage work so this piece of property could be annexed? And let's say, a lot of our, some of my neighbors and people that are going to be affected, I said, well, come down and talk. No, they're going to do what they want to do anyway. I hope you won't do that. I hope you'll look at the situation and know that this particular piece of property, you know, is going to create a lot of problems if it's developed, and I know he can develop it anyway, but it will make it a lot easier and a lot denser, and those people in that area where it floods the 25 acres, they will have problems if it's not remedied.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
And so, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'm Audrey Rich. I live at 5020 Old Salem Road. The property that you're talking about for annexation is just across from where I live. Currently, it is corn and a lot of wooded areas. We, like other people, enjoy our deer and enjoy our turkeys that are there. Like the gentleman before me said, when it's, excuse me, I'm very nervous, when it is all flat and there's nothing growing, you can see, when it does rain, you can see water that does stand out in that property. So, yes, that is also a concern of mine. Also, I would like to let you all know that I was not notified about this. I just happened to see the sign around the curve, so forgive me if I'm a little ill-prepared. I do understand that they're wanting to do some sort of building of some homes, I believe, more towards the end of Old Salem when it gets toward New Salem Highway, Highway 99. So, I have no, I guess, objection to the homes being built on that side because it won't directly affect me, although I do worry about the further annexation of that property that's just across from me. We are all on the septic system, nobody else from the few homes that are here, because like I said, none of us were notified, so I had a chance to speak with a couple of them about that, about it, and they all object to anything happening in that property. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else?
Oh, I'm Marie Williams, and my address is on Windrow Road, but I have property that backs up to East Overall Creek Road, and I have family living on East Overall Creek Road, and it is, as has been explained, it's a single road you have to get off, and it's dangerous to go down the road. There's a curve that you can't see around, it's a complete elbow curve right next to the lady there. So, it is a problem, and I was shocked to think that they're considering developing that land because I, too, have lived there all my life in that area, and I know how much trouble we had getting out down the old Salem Highway, we called it. It was flooded so many times so that nobody could go through, and the water came right across that land and stands there, and I'm just wondering, we're in the Rockville area, we like, we think it's the garden spot of Rutherford County, and you keep edging out that way. We don't want Murfreesboro to go that far if we could help it, but that's my comment.
I don't think you'll see us here anytime soon, so, thank you for your comments, ma'am. Anybody else? Okay, I'll close the public hearing.
Chairman?
Sir?
I would like to point out that after further study and talking with Mr. Huddleston, we have decided that we will be bringing requests to you in the next couple of weeks for the study of Overall Creek Road. It is a substandard road, and we will be studying that, and we're aware that if the property, the forty-five acres, developed, there would have to be some major changes to that road, but that will be coming. We did not include it in this study, so we can't include it now, but we are going to bring it to you, that section of that road.
We did include a portion of East Overall Creek Road. They want to include additional, so where the curve is, as additional study area, so we can't just add it to something which we've already advertised and we've already notified, so there'll be a separate study for just that portion of the right-of-way. We expect development to happen of the Alcorn property and the Gilli property. We expect it to be single-family lots that'll come into the city with interim zoning of RS-15. They said that's more than adequate, so there will be the largest lot minimums that we have in Murfreesboro. If the property stays as it is, then it can continue to be as it is, but if it develops, we would require improvements along substandard streets. We would require it whether in the city or in the county. It makes it clearer to everybody involved if they, if the developers, Alcorn, only needs to come to the city for approval, so if that right-of-way is in the city, then it's just this organization they have to deal with. If it were in the county, they'd have to go to the city and county, so it would make it more clear. So, although we would require improvements in both cases, it would be a much more clear situation if we included additional Overall Creek right-of-way in the study.
Okay. There's one question about the city being responsible for the drainage. Mr. Huddleston, can you hear that?
Yes, Chairman Lamb, as a part of our annexation feasibility study and as a part of our institutional knowledge of this area, we're certainly aware of times when Overall Creek, I'm sorry, when Pocket Creek overtops Old Salem Road. One of the things we identified in our annexation feasibility study was inadequacy of the cross drains at Old Salem, and our recommendation was to upgrade that to a box culvert based on what we've done upstream and downstream of that. We have a pretty good idea of what, how big that box culvert needs to be, and what I would say is that services off of Old Salem are important to us. Being able to travel that road in conditions of inclement weather and flooding would be important to us, so we think it's important for delivery of city surfaces and regular traffic that Old Salem be passable in most weather conditions, and it's currently not, so the city, I think we would be obligated to upgrade that box culvert. It's what I would call a community problem or a regional problem. It's not really driven by the development, it's driven by the substandard conditions that are out there today, and certainly, I would say that, you know, the city is ready and willing and certainly capable of upsizing that box culvert, and we've taken that responsibility on other projects and other properties, and I think would be certainly capable and willing to do that here. I look out and see Mr. Jerry Jenkins in the audience, and his wife called me, oh, I don't know, about six, eight years ago on a Saturday morning, and said, I'd like for you to drive out to Old Salem and East Overall Creek Road, and she knowing what we did, and so I have personally experienced the fields full of water and water overtopping Old Salem. We shared that with the developer, and I think he and his design team have a reasonable approach. have a reasonable approach to develop the twenty-five acres that's most affected by that. I'll also say about the drainage that Pocket Creek is part of a flood-studied stream. The study, unfortunately for us, ended about a half a mile downstream. And my personal and professional desire to see additional study extended up through this area, and I'd look to maybe work with the developers of the Ruckert Donnell property and the Alcorn property to see if we can accomplish that as a joint project between the private enterprise and the city of Murfreesboro. And I think that study would give us certainly more than adequate basis to judge developments in the floodplain. Mr. Lamb, be glad to answer any questions you might have on that.
Thank you, Sam. Any other questions for Mr. Huddleston? Okay, this is pertaining, we just closed the public hearing for the annexation request and the plan of services. Are there any other questions or comments pertaining to this request? I'm sorry, we can't do any more, sir. That was directed at the planning commission. Yeah, any other questions or comments from the planning commission? Now we're ready for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve. It sounds like we looked at the property, and hopefully, we can make a positive impact between the developer and the city as part of the problems that have been part of this section of the community for a long time. So I'll make a motion we approve.
Sir, a second. Motion is made and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Item G is zoning application for approximately thirty-four point one acres located along Old Salem Road to be zoned commercial fringe simultaneous with annexation, approximately seventeen point six acres to be rezoned from OG to CF. Ruckert Donnell Foundation is the applicant. Ms. Green.
Thank you, sir. This public hearing, as I mentioned during the discussion with the last item, is related to the previous item in that the property owned by the Ruckert Donnell Foundation has a zoning change request. You can see on the map that the two orange parcels are not being requested to have a zoning change. If they're zoned for agricultural or single-family residential purposes in the county, our zoning ordinance says that they're zoned RS fifteen, an interim RS fifteen in the city. If annexed, RS fifteen zoning fit their purposes just fine because they wanted their lots to be at least fifteen thousand square feet or larger, so there's no companion zoning change request for those two parcels. However, the property owned by the Ruckert Donnell Foundation is also identified on the map, and it's in the purple color and the blue color. And you can see that this property has two different colors because we want to show you the areas for which the zoning change is being requested. The area that's shaded orange is the area which is just considered for annexation and that just considered adopting the plan of services. And their request is that it be zoned CF, that's Commercial Fringe District, simultaneous with the annexation. There's also a portion of the property that is currently zoned OG, and it's identified in the blue color, that they would like, that Ruckert Donnell Foundation would like to be zoned CF. So that would be rezoned CF. So it would be seventeen point six acres to be rezoned from OG to CF, Commercial Fringe District. And then to zone thirty-four point one acres, CF simultaneous with the annexation. The subject property is located along Old Salem Road, as you can see. It's, as I mentioned, part of a larger Ruckert Donnell Foundation tract. The rest of the property that has frontage on Highway ninety-nine is currently zoned CH, and that's Commercial Highway District. And so the CF District is different than the CH District. It allows different types of uses. I included a chart with your staff report where I listed all the uses permitted in either OG, CF, or CH, where you compare the different zoning classifications that are permitted in those various zoning districts. So you can see what isn't allowed. CH is our most, is our zoning district that allows the most commercial uses. CF is more restrictive in that it allows fewer type uses, and there are some separation requirements in the CF District that don't exist in the CH District. And the OG District is what the property is currently zoned now, or a portion of it is zoned now. So I wanted you to have a reference point. This property is also located within the Salem Pike Land Use Plan, and I've got that plan in your packet as well. The future land use map included in the plan recommends that the Ruckert Donnell property develop as, quote, "mixed-use limited plan development." And then the plan further defines that mixed-use limited plan development as all medium density, which is three to eight dwelling units per acre, and high-density residential, which is greater than eight dwelling units per acre. So it would be three dwelling units per acre, up to twenty-five dwelling units per acre. All institutional uses, all offices with a maximum of thirty percent floor area ratio, and general farming be something that is allowed here. The CF District is consistent with those uses. It does, the CF District does not allow any type of residential use, but it does allow institutional office and general farming. The plan further defines mixed use as the mixing of uses for future development, and it said that that's preferred along Salem Pike for areas in close proximity to the intersection of a major arterial, at least a minor arterial thoroughfare. And preferring the mixing of uses at the appropriate locations, it's recommended, it's the recommendation of the plan that they involve a higher level than traditional development of master planning, design, integration, pedestrian scale, and amenities. And so I've identified with a cloud this property, and of course, the mixed-use limited plan development that's being recommended. The planning commission should conduct a public hearing to consider the zoning change request to zone property CF simultaneous with the annexation and rezone property from OG to CF. If you have questions regarding the application, I'd be glad to answer them. Mr. Taylor is here, and he'd like to come up to the lectern for just a few moments to provide some additional information.
Mr. Taylor, good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Chairman Lamb, members of the planning commission, I'm Matt Taylor of SEC here in Murfreesboro, and I'm here tonight representing the Ruckert Donnell Foundation. I'm accompanied by Mr. Harney of the Parks Group, who also represents the Ruckert Donnell Foundation. The foundation was established many years ago to benefit our community by meeting its educational and civic needs. However, its only ability to do that was through its only asset, the land. It did not inherit a large sum of money to fulfill these needs. So in order to realize its full potential, the foundation has sought to zone its property and its only asset in a manner that's appropriate to the area as well as throughout maximizing that land. We've requested the CF zoning on this property because we feel like it's appropriate to the area and to this specific land to allow it to more fully meet the neighborhood services' needs now and in the future of not only the immediate vicinity, but the entire southwestern quadrant of Murfreesboro and Rutherford County at one of the city's last largest undeveloped intersections. We've requested the CF to allow for a transition zone from the CH that's located out along Highway ninety-nine back to the Old Salem Road. In addition, the CF lends itself more toward the smaller buildings and smaller sites for those neighborhood services, which will also be reinforced by the characteristics of the property that are due to the stream, Pocket Creek, cutting through, bisecting this property. The floodplain, floodway, and the water quality protection areas that come with that stream will further limit the size of those developments, driving these to be smaller in nature and keeping the larger facilities on the south side of Highway ninety-nine. Myself, as well as Mr. Harney, would be happy to answer any questions that you might have now or after the public hearing.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you, Matt. Okay, I'll open the public hearing at this time, and ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commission, staff members. My name is Jim Murray. I live at five-eight-six-eight Montague Avenue in Rockville. I want to just sort of look at both of those two parcels one at a time. With respect to the thirty-four point one acres to be zoned CF simultaneous with the annexation, I'd like the commission to consider RS zoning for this area as a more appropriate land use. And several reasons for that. Really, it's just the surrounding land use. The area to the south of the subject property along Old Salem is residential. The area across Old Salem to the north is residential. The property owned by Mr. Alcorn and the Gilli Trust, just described in the previous annexation petition, will have residential zoning. Residential development is more likely to preserve the Pocket Creek floodplain. From an environmental perspective, the residential development is less likely to impact the fifty-foot buffer required for water quality and downstream landowners. And I believe that the CH zoning along Highway ninety-nine provides great opportunities for commercial development. So all these factors coming together, I believe that RS zoning is maybe a more appropriate land use instead of CF. Now, looking at the seventeen point six acres currently zoned Office General with the proposed rezoning to CF, I'd like the commission to consider leaving this area owned or zoned as Office General. As mentioned, that kind of land use would be a good buffer, step-down usage between Commercial Highway along Highway ninety-nine and future residential developments. OG or Office General was the zoning requested by the Ruckert Donnell Foundation during its twenty-thirteen annexation request. And then based on a, and sort of following with that, based on an October nineteenth, twenty-thirteen letter from Site Engineering Consultants to Joseph Adalot, the OG request was made by the Ruckert Donnell Foundation in response to planning commission discussions following the October second, twenty-thirteen public annexation hearing. So taking those factors into consideration, I would like the commission to consider leaving that particular parcel zoned as OG. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
Good evening again. I'm Audrey Rich. I live at fifty-twenty Old Salem Road. And this gentleman could not have put it any better. There are a few houses that are directly across the road from the property that is wanting to be annexed and changed to CF. I also agree that CF is not a good use for this property since, as you go around, and Mr. Alcorn's property wants to have homes, it would be much better to continue with the country setting that we have, the little suite area that's just outside of Murfreesboro city limits that we all enjoy. Homes would be a much better use of the property. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rich. Anybody else?
Good evening, Commission. I'm Joel Powers. I live at fifty-three hundred Old Salem Road, and I would like to ditto what these two just said. I am right there in the curve, directly across from this property. If you've been in Rutherford County a period of time, you'll recognize this curve as Deadman's Curve. That whole Old Salem Road is kind of a greenway down through there now. I've lived there since it was actually the main Highway ninety-nine when there was a lot of traffic on it. Native of Murfreesboro, and we certainly have plenty of areas to grow and use for commercial space other than that right there. So again, I just ditto what they say. If this is going to be rezoned and used, I would like to see it as housing RS fifteen-type zoning.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Seeing nobody come forward, I'll close the public hearing. Comments by staff or questions from planning commission members?
There was some discussion about an RS zoning being more appropriate for this site. Several years ago, in two thousand and one, because Murfreesboro's been a rapidly growing community for quite some time, and this area was identified as an area where we expect to see future growth, and that's why we embarked on the Salem Pike Land Use Plan. The Salem Pike Land Use Plan, an RS zoning would be inconsistent with that. It would not fit into what the plan proposes in this area. I know we have not adopted the comprehensive plan, but I have looked at it just to kind of get an idea of what it says in this area. The comprehensive plan very similarly recommends mixed use. So if there were residential use that would be more consistent with the Salem Pike Land Use Plan, it would be a high-density or RM sixteen-type zoning that would be consistent. You could also do RZ if you prefer to residential zone. But the proposed CF zone isn't not inconsistent, is not inconsistent with that plan, and I just wanted to let you know that. And also, the commercial development, residential development, both have to meet our stormwater regulations. They have to meet stormwater quality and water quantity. So being developed residentially versus commercially doesn't, one doesn't have less of an impact on our system. They both have to design to meet our standards of quality and quantity.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Any questions or comments from the planning commission?
Let me make sure I understood, Ms. Green, right. Not inconsistent is the same thing as being consistent with.
It is, that's right.
Double negative.
If that's the case, unless there's questions or comments, I would move for approval as presented.
Motion is made and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Item H is the annexation plan of services and annexation petition for approximately one hundred and nine point five acres located along New Salem Highway. Ruckert Donnell Foundation is the applicant. Mr. Blumley.
Thank you, Chairman Lamb. Our next annexation request is property that is further to the south along New Salem Highway. It's actually, just like the last was, one of the parcels being outside of the city's urban growth boundary. This parcel is actually outside of the city's urban growth boundary as well. But as Mr. Ives so eloquently explained earlier, that it is his legal opinion that we do have the authority to annex property that is outside our urban growth boundary. The property is shaded in blue on the map in front of you. It is not by itself contiguous with the existing city limits. However, with the annexation of the right-of-way in front of the subject property, extending back a little bit further to the north, towards town, it will be contiguous with the existing city limits. And as you can tell by that map, that right-of-way of New Salem Highway has been included with this request. Subject property is undeveloped and totals one hundred and six point two acres, but adding the right-of-way in brings the total up to one hundred and nine point five acres. The Ruckert Donnell property or foundation has submitted an annexation petition requesting the annexation of the subject property. Staff has included an annexation study and plan of services in your agenda packet, and staff will be able, or the city will be able to provide services upon annexation. Sewer does run right through the middle of the property. And sewer was extended, just like with the last property that Ms. Green referenced in the previous public hearing, sewer was extended to serve the Rockville school system or the Rockville school campuses to the south of the subject property on New Salem Highway. So it will have access to sewer upon annexation for future development. There is a subsequent public hearing on the agenda for the zoning of the property to RS ten, but this particular public hearing is just with regards to the annexation petition and plan of services. We'll be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing.
Any questions of staff before we open the public hearing? If not, I'll open the public hearing, asking anybody to come forward that'd like to speak on the annexation of this property.
My name's Brady Allred. I live at five-eight-seven-one East Overall Creek Road. This property borders my property. And I see that you've already made arrangements. I didn't think the road could be annexed to include a non-contiguous piece of property. I thought the new state law excluded that. But that was one of my arguments on it. The other argument is it's a carst area toward the back. All right, any development, even if you have sewer, the development and a lot of the sinkholes are called, like windows into groundwater. I'm on a well, have been for thirty years. It's always check good. All right? They develop, and development in itself plus this dense zoning, which, you know, I don't know why they want to RTN. I know it's because it increases the value of the property, and that's their aim to, and I can't fault the, you know, Board of Directors for the foundation to try and to increase their fund because of their financial obligations or whatever. But the council ought to, in the zoning request, take into consideration the people there that are going to be affected. that are going to be affected. If the groundwater's contaminated, it costs me thousands of dollars. I have to run a water line from, you know, quarter mile, you know? And it sounds like everything's done been thawed out, you know? Annex the road? Okay, why don't we annex the road all the way to the next municipality? Equal. That way you can pick out which parcels of land along the way you want to annex. And that's, that's the way you look at it. And that's, these people here had concerns, and so far you've passed them off. You know, okay, we've got it covered. We've got a way around it. All right? Well, you might have. You've got a lot more brain power and lawyer power sitting on there than average citizen. But, you know, I asked you before to consider the citizens and the residents and the taxpayers are going to pay for a lot of this improvements that are going to go in these places. But it sounds like you're not going to do it. So, I thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
My name is Brent DeMent. I live at six oh oh six Highway ninety-nine. The property you're talking about annexing to the city surrounds me on two sides, so I have a concern. I like the idea of being able to develop your property somewhat the way you want to, but I also like to look out for my neighbors if that's possible. This is a drainage area. I've lived out there thirty-two, went on thirty-three years. On the west side where water comes underneath Highway ninety-nine, it drains down the west side of my property, goes around the back of it, curves around, and comes out over there to where we were talking about deadman's curve, crosses several pieces of property. Pushers Place Subdivision and the property next to mine over there. So, when you look at the way the drainage situation is going to be looked at, you're going to have to back up all the way around off of the old Highway ninety-nine over to where currently the new Dollar General store is, which is catty-cornered across from my Gentleman is correct. There are sinkholes out there. I have a well that I think is in one of them, and I had a wet weather sinkhole there when I moved there. I've been able, through being an individual and wanting to fill my property, have a, for lack of a better term, a way for the sinkhole to breathe as I fill that sinkhole in. I talked by phone with a state person. He says you don't have to have any permits to do what you're wanting to do since you're a private landowner. I would suggest you put in a thirty-inch, thirty-six-inch standpipe so that the sinkhole can breathe. As the city was putting the sewer in, the contractor needed a place to get rid of some rock, a good point for me to fill in my hole. Instead of putting in a thirty-six-inch pipe there, standpipe for it to breathe, I put in a forty-eight inch. I've seen water stand out there in that area for as much as six to eight weeks because of the wet weather. So, I know it's going to drain around my property and across this property you're talking about annexing. I'm not saying they can't fill it. They can, if they want to spend that much money to develop it. My main concern is, and it's not part of this, I guess, this hearing, I'm concerned about what size house will go on a ten thousand square foot lot. That's my big concern, but I need to make you aware of some of the problems that are out there with the situation of annexing this in and what you're going to be facing when you go through the development process, and just comes back up with a plot plan for you to look at and how you're going to address it. So, that's what I want to make you aware of.
Thank you, Mr. DeMent. Anybody else?
Joel Powers again, fifty-three hundred Old Salem Road. I went to the meeting out at Scales School about two and a half years ago when the Donnell Foundation was presenting some ideas, and they gave us this map out there that night or they had this, it shows this property here just barely that you're talking about now, and the Alcorn property here said this was outside the, maybe it was the urban growth area, whatever, that that could not ever be developed because that boundary. But we see here tonight, one part has already been approved to be, and now here's another part that's not even close to it, that you guys are strongly considering doing the same. And I oppose that as well.
Thank you, sir. Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing. The property owner has a right for requesting annexation and requesting zoning. Now, that doesn't mean it's going to be developed in the manner that he hopes it will be, and there's a lot of hurdles that have to be crossed between now and when development plans are finally approved. So, I appreciate your concerns and comments about that, but it's still a long process before it's, it's ever developed. Any other comments or questions from members of the Planning Commission? This is on the annexation and plan of services.
So, Mr. Ives, you're comfortable with the annexation of ninety-nine and that making it contiguous with respects to this particular annex application?
Yes, I am.
With that, I'll make a motion that we approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Item I, a zoning application for approximately one hundred and nine point five acres located along New Salem Highway to be rezoned, to be zoned RS ten simultaneous with annexation. Rucker Donnell Foundation is the applicant. Mr. Blumley.
Thank you, Chairman Lamb. Same subject property that we just considered for annexation is located along the west side of New Salem Highway, directly across the street from the entrance to the Clear Ridge subdivision. To the south of the subject property, just two parcels removed is the Rockvale School campuses, the Rockvale Elementary School and the Rockvale Middle School, one on each side of the street. There are single-family residential uses. As I mentioned, the Clear Ridge subdivision located in the unincorporated county across the street, as well as some larger estate-type lots and the Pusher Place subdivision, two lots to the north as well. There are some commercial uses in the vicinity of the subject property, including a multi-tenant retail center occupied by or anchored by Dollar General across New Salem Highway. The subject property has been requested for an RS ten zoning simultaneous with annexation. RS ten zoning is one of our three largest lot zoning classifications. There's RS fifteen, which is a minimum of fifteen thousand square foot lots, RS twelve, minimum of twelve thousand square foot lots, and RS ten, a minimum of ten thousand square foot lots. We have a rough, rough formula that we use to determine how many, absent other environmental constraints, how many lots can be developed maximum just based upon raw acreage and the zoning of the property. And staff estimates that a parcel of this size, as I mentioned, absent any other environmental concerns on the property, could yield a maximum of approximately three hundred and fifty, ten thousand square foot lots. That number likely to be less than that because in nearly every instance, there are numerous lots in a subdivision that exceed the maximum, the maximum lots, or exceed the minimum lot size. By way of comparison, if the property was annexed with a zoning classification of RS fifteen, which would come into the city with if it were annexed without a companion zoning request, staff estimates that the maximum lot yield would be approximately two hundred and thirty, so a difference of about a hundred and twenty lots. As an aside, there was some discussion on the previous item about the Salem Pike Land Use Plan. This property is just outside of the boundaries of the Salem Pike Land Use Plan, so there are no recommendations specifically for this property. With that being said, we do need to conduct a public hearing on this request of RS ten simultaneous with its annexation. Mr. Matt Taylor is here in the audience representing the Rucker Donnell Foundation, and I believe he'll have a few words to say before we open the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Blumley. Matt Taylor from SEC. We have made the request for annexation as well as the rezoning to gain access to the city sewer that runs through this property. The RS ten is an effort to try to get back to the density that would be allowed under RS fifteen. As the gentleman said, there are several hardships or characteristics of this property. It's very steep in the back of the property on the west side, very carst, we believe, up in that area. And then the eastern part is very low-lying. It's where a lot of this drainage goes through that's been mentioned on the properties downstream of here. We're very familiar, familiar with the area and have recognized that, and we believe that this will let us keep a reasonable density while also still being on fairly significantly large lots, as Mr. Blumley said, with this being one of the top three largest in the zoning ordinance allowed. So, myself or Mr. Harney will be happy to answer any questions now or after the meeting.
Okay. Any questions from Mr. Taylor? Thank you, Matt. Okay, I'll open the public hearing, asking anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. Nobody?
I'd like to look at RS fifteen because...
I'm sorry, sir. Just, I'm sorry. Once can state your name.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Been up here three times.
Yes, sir, I know.
Brady Allred, five eight seven one East Overall Creek Road.
Thank you.
I would request that they did look at RS fifteen because of the concentration of the R ten, because in knowing the area, the more houses, the more, you know, contamination of groundwater, the more, you know, everything bad. And I would like him to consider that.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Taylor, approximately how much of this property is developable, do you think?
I, I've not actually walked out there to see.
Just wild guess on percentages.
You know, my guess is the eastern one-third or so is going to be, is extremely low-line, and so we would limit the amount of fill there. And then the, I would say, western fifths, I would say there's in the neighborhood of twenty to thirty acres that's probably not developable or would be very hard to develop.
With the RS ten zoning, I know you, it's a long way off, but well, that's the absolute minimum size of the lots. A lot of the lots would be quite a bit larger than ten thousand square feet, I would guess.
It probably would because some of this area, we would either put in common area or we may make it into very deep lots where somebody's got just a very generous backyard. And, you know, we always have lots that are much larger than the minimum lot size in all of our developments.
Okay. Any other questions from Mr. Taylor? Thank you, Matt. Any other questions or comments by members of the Planning Commission?
Mr. Lamb, historically, RS ten has some very expensive houses on it, and as you stated so well, most of those lots are going to be larger than ten thousand feet. So, I think, I feel comfortable with the RS ten zoning, and I'll move for approval.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Yes, sir. Item J, final public hearing. Proposed amendments to the signed ordinance regarding the addition of two additional types of signs, signs and easements, and delete height limitations on attached signs in the CBD, the Central Business District, City of Murfreesboro. Legal Department is the applicant. Mr. Ives, good evening.
Chairman, you finally get to me. Thank you very much. We have a, six different sections to this proposed sign ordinance amendment tonight, and I'll just go through them section at a time. Number one, we will add three definitions to the sign ordinance. We'll define an awning. We'll define an awning sign, and we'll define a projecting sign. And of course, the purpose of those definitions is to allow those types of signs, and an awning sign be allowed on an awning as defined in, in our proposed ordinance. The projecting sign is something that would be perpendicular to the face of the building as opposed to mounted basically on the surface of the building. The classic example in town is the Holden Hardware Store sign, which will again be allowable under our signed ordinance if this is passed. The second section, we have to make some changes to the current definition of attached sign in order to allow the awning sign and the projecting sign. The fourth section is a bit of a different topic. Currently, in order to place a sign in an easement, one has to get the consent of the easement holder, the consent of the codes department, and go to the BZA for approval. We've thought about this for some time and worked on this. Really, the BZA step is, would seem to be unnecessary. I'm unaware of the BZA ever refusing to allow someone to put a sign in an easement when the easement holders have consented to it. So, what we want to do is make this an administrative process. We have created a more definite form for the applicant to get the consent of all the appropriate easement holders, have it reviewed by staff. Staff will add if they feel appropriate, you know, and probably will in most cases, that there'd be a surveyor certificate to certify where the footing is with respect to the easement. So, this will save some time and money. It costs, it costs an applicant at least a month and some time and effort, and they have to have a, hire another job for their civil engineer. We feel that this can be streamlined without losing any, anything. We, currently, the signed ordinance limits the height of a sign in the Central Business District to ground-level floor or sixteen feet. Those of you who are familiar with some of the old photographs of Murfreesboro and the square know that there used to be signs that were higher than that. With some interest and some discussion, we've considered this for some time. We think now is the time to eliminate this restriction to a sign in the Central Business District being sixteen feet or first floors. That obviously that will be, allow a taller sign in Central Business District. Finally, we want to change the requirements with respect to interstate onsite signs. This not, these are not billboards. These are properties that are located near the interstate and have a, have their own, a ground sign that is considered interstate. Currently, they're required to be either non-illuminated or push-through lighting. What we found is that at the height of an interstate sign, the push-through lighting requirement is really, it's ineffective, and it costs more money for no purpose. The second thing is that we require landscaping around the base of an interstate sign. Because of the depth and size of the bases of these signs, we find that it's practically impossible to get landscaping through, so we're proposing to eliminate those two requirements. That's it.
Okay. Any questions from Mr. Ives?
I got one. So, on the, the signs with respects to the Central Business District, Central Business District, kind of eliminating the height restriction, does that sign have to be attached to the front face of the building? Or are we saying that they could put a sign on top of the building that there is no height restriction?
No, there's no, roof signs are, continue to be prohibited.
Okay. That answers my question.
Right. Okay. Okay, if there's no other questions, I'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing. If there's no further questions, we're ready for a motion.
I'll make a motion. Will you approve?
Second.
Motion's made in seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Squeaks by, Mr. Ives. That concludes the public hearing portion of our agenda tonight. Staff reports and other business. Mr. Whitaker, surely you have nothing at this late hour.
I have nothing.
Mr. Lewis has some.
Mr. Lewis has something. I know.
Mr. Lewis has nothing.
I saw your handout on continuing education, so you have the floor, sir.
I have some corrections. Please be brief.
I move for approval. I handed out the, the schedule for the remaining of the year, remaining months of the year, and I neglected to consider the... And I neglected to consider the 2035 Friday, 23rd. Meeting we had at Patterson Park. So I'll add that to those who attended that meeting. In addition to any, any other seminars or conferences you're planning on attending, just let me know which ones they are and I'll include them in the, in the materials.
Okay. And I see you have the conference, the teleconference schedule for the rest of the year on here as well. Any questions for Mr. Lewis? Sir?
There is a full day of training in Nashville, Friday, the 23rd. If anybody would like to attend, you could probably get most of your hours. Just let me know. I'll be happy to fund that so you can go. If anybody's interested, please let me know from the commission.
I would say this is a seminar that I've been to for a couple of years. Mr. Smith, I think, went both years. Some others have attended. It frankly is one of the best land use continuing education seminars that I've ever been to. And partly, it's because of the speakers and the audience there are a lot of people who know each other and who work together. So there's, there's more back and forth conversation and discussion than there is in most seminars. It's a, it's a good day if you'd like to have some fun in Nashville.
Okay, thank you. Any other business? There's no other business. We stand adjourned.